So what was the basic structure? Who's the oldest person in the family? Is everybody at this event? Is it a community thing below him or would it go back much broader?
No, actually he's the last. So we've got a stem counter.
Becoming one of the better.
Yeah.
He was staying in my family, so my ninety-two-year-old dad still do great. And he's the only one in his generation. He's mean to everyone. Hey, how are you? Are they met? Okay, is it a broadcast or is it just recording? Okay. And do we pass the whole thing?
Yeah.
It sticks there. Pass that easy.
You didn't get back to me when I said?
Yeah, good.
Shall I have my computer to access all of my years? I guess we're just gonna have their presentation.
This is the second?
This is them? This is now? That would have been somewhere. It already happened, yeah.
Come over before we start throwing dodgeballs.
Yep, be interesting today. We got a lot of stuff happening. So he's part of Eric Cohen. Apparently. Thank you.
I just sent this in the electronic form.
Hey, how are you?
It's the shared file. I'm sorry. The shared file. Oh, yeah.
We came into this meeting.
But we're all gonna. We're all gonna get help like that or we're going after? Oh, yeah. And then I put no sign up. If anyone wanted them, they could have gotten them from HR. I just don't think anyone really wanted them. At one point, you guys, I thought, oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
They're in for a surprise.
She wasn't realizing until last week. Might not really be. Because we already discussed, hey, we already discussed pushing out the deadline.
Ms. Alvin?
That maybe we should just start a little bit to try and not have any. Oh, yeah. That was consistent. But she's aware. They're gonna prevent us. Do you need to pull up or doing this? I have other documents. I have my computer open. My question. Yes, have my computer open. I don't wanna be rude.
Are you saying bad things about Mr. Collins? Is that supposed to? Really? Make bad things about him? Say bad things?
No, I make it a point that we, but we don't. I have my.
It's all subjective, I suppose.
I actually donated to Charlottesville.
I don't have any relatives?
So there's a difference.
I had. Right. I don't know.
Don't get the W. Raised that one last year.
Sorry. It's okay. It's only two weeks away. You can make it happen then.
But it wasn't rare. It could have been another plane.
That's all friendship port.
Are you ready?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yeah.
Good evening. I call this meeting to order and turn the meeting over to Mr. Mike Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. Tonight, we'll have two work sessions. The first with Charlottesville Redevelopment Housing Authority, followed by a work session with the Piedmont Housing Alliance. And the purpose of these meetings is for the council to be well-informed about redevelopment efforts with these entities, and particularly from the perspective of the city manager's office to have input from council prior to the finalization of our draft CIP that will go to the Planning Commission on December eighteenth. So we are excited about the possibility of the redevelopment for both of these agencies and look forward to hearing from them, starting with Mr. Grant Duffield, I believe, who will kick us off this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, Mayor Walker, members of council. Very much appreciate the opportunity to share a few minutes with you this evening. Before I begin, I'd like to reintroduce my commission that is here with me this evening. I have Audrey Oliver, our treasurer, Chairwoman Julie Jones, Commissioner Letita Talbert, Commissioner Mike Lowstein, and Resident Commissioner Carolyn Slaughter. This evening, Vice Chair Betsy Rutger is unable to join us. Very much appreciate council's willingness to take a few minutes to spend time with CRHA. As I begin, I'd like to touch base with council concerning some of the initiatives, the partnerships that we've worked on in the past, in the recent past, sort of share with you some of those successes. And I'd like to take an opportunity to bring council up to, and the community, up to speed on redevelopment planning and efforts that are well underway concerning redevelopment of CRHA's sites. And then we'll close out by offering you an opportunity to continue to work together with CRHA in partnership as we move forward with redevelopment.
Mr. Duffield, as we go through this, if, do you want us to have, can we ask questions during the presentation or you want us to wait till the end?
Let's, please, please ask questions as you like.
Thank you.
As long as they're easy questions, okay? All right? The hard questions will wait till tomorrow, okay? All right. Yeah, to begin, thank you. None of what we've been able to accomplish thus far as a housing authority would be possible without the support of city council and the community as a whole. We are blessed to have partners like the Public Housing Association of Residents, city council members, the community at large as we embark on this monumental opportunity to truly change and restore the nature and fabric of our community. Recently, we've embarked on the Charlottesville Supplemental Rental Assistance Program. We call this Investments Reaching Home. As you'll recall, in 2017, the city's Housing Advisory Committee was asked by council to develop a short list of immediate impact kind of projects or initiatives that the city could undertake that would have immediate impacts on the affordable housing crisis that we're facing. To that end, the HAC recommended that city council provide funding to support a supplemental rental assistance program and that the city partner with CRHA in that by doing so, the city could utilize CRHA's existing housing choice voucher infrastructure, if you will, and capital to spread the investment within the community. Also, by doing so, one hundred percent of the investments funded, investment funding that city council made, is turned directly to participants. There's no administrative or overhead cost that CRHA receives out of that program. On October seventeenth, in October, yeah, October nine, 2017, city council appropriated $900,000 for the CRSA program. We projected that we'd be able to serve about seventy-five families with that amount of funding. There was a holdback of funding amount of $225,000. So 900,000 less 225. Those funds were held back in reserve in case future funding for the program was not appropriated by future councils. There would be a certain amount of funding available to spin out the program and not leave the families in dire straits. The C-S, the C-SRAP program targets these tiers. Fifty percent of the funding is targeted for families at less than thirty percent AMI. Twenty-five percent is targeted for families in the thirty to fifty percent AMI, and the last twenty-five percent is targeted to income family, family incomes at fifty to sixty percent of area median income. Residents, participants have to be residents of Charlottesville, live or work within Charlottesville, as is with our HCV program. And we set preferences for individuals, families who are homeless, those who are involved in self-sufficiency programs, and those individuals who are currently on the CRHA waiting list. What we found is a tremendous demand. It's what we, what we knew we would find is what based, is what the HAC's recommendation was based on. We knew that there was pent-up demand and need for affordable housing and that this was a tremendous vehicle to make it happen. As we sit here today, we have a hundred families that are participating in the program. We remember we projected that there would be seventy-five. The amount of funding needed is not as great as we had originally projected. Therefore, we're able to spread that funding a little further. We also, in addition to that, we have twenty families that are currently on a waiting list to get into the C-SRAP program. Only, we only have the waiting list because we are at a place right now where we feel like we've very close to maxed out our funding. We have sixty-seven families that are currently housed. That means you have, we've got the, yeah, the balance of thirty-three families who are currently seeking housing, okay?
Okay.
So a hundred participants in, thirty-three seeking, sixty-seven in housing. They are in the, those thirty-three are in the ninety to one-hundred-and-eighty-day process by which, within which to obtain housing. Of the sixty-seven families that are currently housed, fifty-two live within the city. We have fifteen families that live outside the city in Albemarle County, but have family members, immediate family, who live or who work within Charlottesville. To this point, the program's been tremendously well-received, certainly by the participants, but the landlord community has been very receptive as well. They recognize there's a need. The program itself follows our housing choice voucher guidelines. So the same income limits, thirty percent, no more than thirty percent of income is contributed to rent, the same restrictions that HUD has in place, we have in place with, and safeguards. Household composition, almost eighty percent of the families that we're serving are families with kids. That's, that's something I was a little surprised to see. I'm thankful to see it, but it's a, it's a strong number. We have, with our current funding level with sixty-seven families, all right, of the 900,000, stopped right there. We've encumbered over a twelve-month period, $575,393. Does that make sense? That's, that's the spend that we're gonna have on those sixty-seven families. We have twenty-seven who are currently unleased, well, thirty-three that are actually currently unleased, seeking, I'm sorry, an additional two hundred. If they come under lease at the same rates as the previous, per capita as the previous, we would anticipate spending about $283,000, $284,000 over a twelve-month period, giving us a total potential encumbrance at this point, exposure, if you will, of $858,863. So the ask out of all of this is, look, can we release the holdback funding that we have in place now, that city council put in place with the, with the initial 900,000?
Sure. So one question for you, Mr. Duffield. What is the actual amount in terms of dollar amount for the additional funding that's needed from the holdback funding? What's the number?
Yeah, I would, I'd suggest to you all of it is what we need. Yeah.
That was a 220?
225,000, yeah.
Right.
Dollars, considering that, yeah, we have families who are currently seeking, and we have a backlog in addition to that of twenty other families that need it.
And for those families, there's been some concern from not only the housing authority, but the community as a whole about the reauthorization of that funding for year two, correct? So, so it's one of your asks that council, although we can't legally bind upcoming budgets or future councils in regards to spending, that we make some kind of good faith effort or some kind of commitment to show that we will continue to fund this effort? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, I, you know, we'll leave the legalities to the lawyers, man. I'd say, I need the, yeah, we need the funding. I'm just, yes, absolutely. If we can get some kind of reauthorization allocating year-two funding, that's ideal.
So, Mr. Murphy, in regards to allocating year-two, I know that would be our upcoming budget cycle. So if this council was able to say yes, we'd be able to fund that. But then for the year after, how, if it is the desire or the pleasure of this council, how will we go about ensuring that that's, that there is continuous funding for those who are in need? Because the last thing we want is for individuals to get a home through this city funding, be able to be placed somewhere in which rent is rather outside of their means, but through this funding, we're able to help get them off the street, quote-unquote. But then in a year, they not know whether or not the funding's gonna be there or, in worst-case scenario, in a year, they're no longer allowed to have funding. So how would we be able to keep them secure there?
Well, two ways, I would say, Dr. Bellamy. One would be that the intent of the program was that the people who got leased up and what we encumbered was intended to be a twenty-four-month cycle because most best practice in transitional housing is for a two-year period.
Correct.
A little bit of a surprise to me that we would lease up the entire 900,000 for a one-year, twelve-month cycle, if I heard that correctly. I will say that from my perspective and where we are, having worked on the draft CIP for some period of time, and I believe I've said this previously in a public setting, I think it's extremely important that you continue the funding for this program. It's part of the current allocation in the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund. And whether that fund was to be static, shrink, or grow, I would say that this would be the first priority to be kept out of those funds, regardless of what priorities the council is gonna set about other affordable housing and redevelopment projects. I think this is, you can't possibly develop affordable housing properties at the rate that's necessary, and so housing people with vouchers has to be a part of the overall strategy.
One option, okay. And let me just include as well here, one of the opportunities that we're looking at, this program's received a fair amount of attention from HUD.
Right.
They are extremely interested in what we're doing, very supportive in what we're doing, to the point that there is discussion of being able to start crosswalking some of our families off the C-SRAP program into the HCV program, okay? Using our existing HCV limits.
Correct.
Yeah.
Do you mind going back to the acronyms again?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just can you?
Yeah.
HCV again? Can you explain the acronyms again?
NCSTRAP, for those who.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize. CRHA administers a, Charlottesville Redevelopment Housing Authority, right? CRHA administers a housing choice voucher program. We call that the HCV program. It used to be called Section Eight. It's federally funded. It provides rental subsidies for individuals to find housing, obtain housing in the private market. The Charlottesville Supplemental Rental Assistance Program very much mirrors our HCV program in its intent and scope. It uses funding that the city council has allocated out of the housing fund for CRHA to use to, again, help individuals who are trying to find affordable housing in the private marketplace.
And so HUD is looking at the program to?
To try and find a vehicle for us to be able to cross to allow, give people the options that are currently in the, in the C-SRAP program, provide an option to those families to be able to come into the housing choice voucher program, get a federally subsidized housing choice voucher based on, yeah, the experience that we're having with the C-SRAP program.
So would that free up?
Should, yes, that would.
The local voucher program?
Right, right. That's right. Now, all of that's contingent upon, we have a certain allocation of vouchers that we're allowed to expend. We have a certain budgetary authority that we're not allowed to exceed, but HUD's working, is interested in working with us on the, on the budgetary piece.
Is it a prerequisite that they go through this two years on our program in order for, I was trying to understand if that's how HUD was viewing it? Is it proven?
I think they're just, I think they're, they're seeing the demand, the need of the service being in place, and why not, why not move those families if they'd like to into the HCV program?
I have a question about, you said that the landlords were very receptive to this. Was there any particular outreach that you did to the private owner community and orientation? How, how did that come about?
That's a, that's a fine question. I don't know that I've got an answer for you beyond the outreach that we do with our HCV program.
All right.
And my, my staff person isn't here this evening.
That's nice to know, though.
Yeah.
Thank you. Just one question. Have there been any issues or challenges with administering the program so far? Administrative, anything? Because I know there was some question at the beginning about who would do it, and then, and then working with CRHA was what we chose to do. I'm just curious about, sort of like, going forward to re-up it. What's, how is it going? Are there things that would be done differently if it's?
I think, no, I appreciate that. Initially, with any new program, we, we had some rough spots, but I think once the folks in NDS, once Ms. Pathia's office and CRHA had a chance to, to work through some items, yeah, we've developed a, an administrative process that, that I think's fair and reasonable and meets everyone's needs. Essentially, yeah, no, absolutely. The city doesn't write a large check to CRHA for the 900 less 220,000, $700,000. The city writes a series of smaller checks. As we draw down those funds, we petition and replenish. That way, the city is never exposed for the whole amount, and it's sort of a fund based on performance as you go forward. We're very comfortable with that. I think it's, I think it's a reasonable safeguard for the public trust as well. Thanks.
And when did year one start for the first family?
February 2018, so eight months ago, something like that, yeah. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump because we've got a couple more areas to hit. And please, if I'm, if I'm misrepresenting or not, not saying what you, I'm sorry. Okay. Audrey says I'm good, so I'm good. The other program really thankful for and very much appreciative of is our Residents on the Job Program. This is an investment that reaches work. This was an opportunity to work with City of Charlottesville. Certainly, our partners at FAR were instrumental in bringing this opportunity forward to us. Cooperative relationships with Habitat for Humanity, Piedmont Valley Community College, Piedmont Virginia Community College, and CRHA. Under this project, the city agreed to invest $145,000 in a job skills program that helps take residents of CRHA and help them gain critical job trade knowledge as we address vacancies and substantial rehab of certain apartments within CRHA. What absolutely did was set a solid groundwork, a solid framework for a Section Three program. And again, the Section Three program is, is one that FAR has long championed and really helped craft this project in terms of, of the Section Three lens. Leverages the community expertise, which is phenomenal, working with Habitat for Humanity. Actually, had other organizations that have recently stepped up would like to provide expertise as well. Returns vacant units to the public housing inventory. So not only are people being trained up, gaining skills, we're also taking housing that is currently or not used and making it usable in the housing portfolio. And again, providing the in-depth skills.
What is the number of units that are currently offline of all the properties you oversee?
Twelve, all right. Yeah, we've got twelve substantial, substantial rehabs. In addition to that, we have, oh, gosh, you gave me the numbers.
We said in the meeting last week, there was like another four to six that were essentially offline, being turned.
That are part of the normal turn process. That's some, a family moves out, it takes a period of time to repaint.
On average, how long are these substantial rehabs offline?
These have been offline for anywhere from ten to eighteen months, yeah. Um, these have been offline for anywhere from 10 to 18 months. Yeah. Um, and we're trying to work on that.
So to that question, we discussed, if I may, Mr. Duffield?
Certainly.
To that question, Vice Mayor, we discussed in our housing authority, uh, work session that we had last Monday, potentially, if we know the significant amount of damage for the substantial units that's needed, and due to the fact that our maintenance, our current, the CRHA maintenance crew is so stretched, um, at the current moment in time, would this be a situation in which, similar to what we did a couple of years ago with the city, um, we look into maybe have some of our public works department come in and help out, or if it were to be contracted out, just so that we can get those units back online, and potentially we, uh, we being the city, work with the housing authority to do so. Uh, Ms. Galvin was on council, um, and I'm sure you remember when we had to, to go in and assist the housing authority. Again, when you look at units being offline for very substantial work, 12 to 18 months, um, and the, the current maintenance staff is kind of really tough to ask them to do all of the regular turning of the units and go in and, and put in a new floor or new roof or something like that. That's tough.
But there has been some private interest in helping with those efforts, like local private interests?
Yes.
What, what has been the roadblocks for accepting that assistance? Has it been like HUD requirements?
You know, I, I'm, I, I don't think there is as much sort of HUD issue. Um, I think it is bandwidth, to be quite honest, being able to, uh, to coordinate those efforts in, in a fashion that, that works, uh, for the community, um, and, uh, for the, for the maintenance protocols.
Cause someone still has to manage, I mean, not manage per se, but still kind of oversee the project if, if a private company's coming in and helping. You still need someone from the housing authority to be there.
If I could piggyback on what you're all saying, that, um, the reason why the, as I remember, Councilor Bellamy, the, the city stepped in with, through the facilities management, not to do the work, but to, to coordinate and work with their own list of private contractors and subcontractors. So they were still private companies doing the work, but we assisted with the coordination and management of those entities.
I guess, um...
That's, that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
I just know, like, building goodness has raised this as an opportunity, an area that they would like to be involved, and there's even some even more private people, like literally individuals who have a skillset, who wanna help, and they've seen the firsthand, like, the, the need. And so I'm just trying to understand what roadblock, what, how can we remove the roadblocks if there's energy from the community, within our own community that has the skills to do that, so.
So what assistance were they offering?
I'm sorry?
Construction assistance, like?
No, I don't know if it's quite.
It's probably, it's a discussion, no, I, I totally agree. Um, yeah, would absolutely welcome the support and in no way want to deter that. Um, I think now that we've got a redevelopment coordinator, uh, on board, was, I just hired in a director of housing, I think some of those bandwidth challenges are, are much diminished, and absolutely look forward to, to working with, with a building goodness, uh, with, with others in the community to, to help get it done, absolutely.
Mr. Duffield, um, one, um, thank you for, for everything and all, what's to come too, and, and hello to all the commissioners. One, um, one thing that I wanted to, to raise at the beginning, and to probably come back to a couple times, is, so it's, it's incredibly human and compelling, the stories we hear about, about, not stories that people involved with virtually every issue impacting CRHA. And over the last couple of years, one of the questions that comes up is what's, what's the rationale of the policy when we make decisions to help CRHA in one way or another? And we, a lot of people don't know. So CRHA is an independent authority. It's a, it's set up by law. It's an independent authority. It is not run by council. It has one council on the board. There was a time when council was the CRHA that was made independent, and this happens all around the country. There's independent housing authorities, and my question is, is just can we come up with a policy that would help us not do this ad hoc? So in the three years I've been on council, we've been ad hoc in a number of different ways. I've voted for a number of supports to CRHA. We had, you know, I mean, the, the equity investment, the, and some of them support kind of go through CRHA, some of them are direct. We had the vote on Ting early this year. There's different ones, and, and I would, you know, we've done MOUs. It, it makes it, I think, better and more transparent for the public, easier for us to make decisions, easier to put them in a context, easier to plan if there's a policy. Like, right now we have these MOUs with Alamo County that are really starting to guide how we are cooperating with them on really important things, and that means we've sat down and come to an agreement, as opposed to doing this ad hoc, cause I'm, a lot of the time I don't know what, how are, are we making it because it's something really timely, or there's a federal agency in the background, or it's a, like, it, there's a reason that this need is one that city council should come in, CRHA's the better off. It, that, we could, I just, just for me, I think that it would be better if, if we had a agreement that then we would work from in the future that would establish how do we cooperate together and why? And I would guess that, cause in the absence of that, there's a lot of people who say, well, why, so it should be independent. It should do, it should finance itself with mixed use, like they did in Alexandria or whatever, and then that's Alexandria. So I, I think it would be very helpful to have examples of other cities that have cooperated with their independent housing authorities with the decrease in HUD support, and how have they done it? Are there similar MOUs or agreements out there or policies? Because otherwise, we, we can ad hoc it, but it just seems like it would be better if we did it on the basis of an agreement and policy. And I'm not meaning to clutter the works. I think that, I think that we did them with Alamo County very quickly, and we have done other ones with, uh, with, you know, with other, I, I, there have been a couple other examples. I just, they're escaping right now. It just, it feels like it would be a, a good thing for all of us.
No, a, a solid directive, a solid MOU could absolutely unclutter the works.
And if I recall, that I believe the Resident Bill of Rights to Redevelopment is a memorandum of understanding. That's an MOU. So we have, we have a precedent out there.
Sure.
And that's still standing. I don't know if that, I'm, I'm assuming that that's just standing, at agreement.
Okay.
So...
Put that on the list, yes. Okay?
Be a way to put all your wish list on there.
Okay, alright. Um, in addition to the other work that's been done, I mean, we've, we've been able to return eight units to service. Um, provided some absolutely critical workforce assistance, pathway to job placement. We have, um, two individuals who are currently entertaining, um, job placement elsewhere in the private market, all of which is, in my mind, is a success. Um, on top of that, we receive some tremendously positive national recognition, both from the National Low Income Housing Coalition, uh, as well as HUD, HUD itself. Um, what you've agreed to do and help us with is, is unprecedented, and it's, it doesn't go unnoticed. So, you're to be commended. As the sign says, thank you. Doesn't work without you, okay? And, uh, it's very, very much appreciated. Our community appreciates it, um, and I think it makes Charlottesville as a whole a better place. Primarily here this evening to talk about, uh, opportunities to, again, partner, in addition to, um, you know, the rental assistance program, in addition to the, uh, on-the-job training, in addition to the work that we're able to do with the West Haven Clinic and Human Services Division, uh, in addition to the Ting opportunities before us. We, we stand at a critical juncture today where there are truly some opportunities to make some powerful investments, uh, and monumental changes and improvements within our community, and it is, it is nothing short of exciting. Um, just to refresh, you, CRHA owns and manages 376 units of public housing at these various sites. We also administer up to 533 housing choice vouchers. Bless you.
Bless you.
Currently, state of our housing is aging. Um, and it's, the reason that we are in, in such a bind or such a situation is that, quite honestly, when this housing was constructed, it was never constructed to be long-term housing. Public housing was constructed to be a short-term solution, you know, for which social programs then kick in, and we'd elu- we'd eliminate poverty, we wouldn't need public housing, therefore why invest significantly in the, in the resource if it's not going to be needed long-term? Well, uh, that took the form of cost caps in, in construction, um, and a, and designing housing to last 20, 30 years tops. Now we are far outside the useful life of that housing, um, and we're dealing with the consequences of how do we maintain something that, again, was never intended to be maintained long-term? It's more expensive. We're getting less funding from the federal government, as we all know. Um, and furthermore, our, our housing exists, it's sort of in isolated pockets of poverty. It's, it's segregated, separated from the rest of Charlottesville. What redevelopment gives us truly is a chance to, to clean the slate, to redress many of the decisions that happened 40, 50 years ago, and truly look forward to the future in a way that builds a, uh, low-income community that complements the greater Charlottesville, uh, community, that, that works hand-in-hand with, uh, the community as a whole, um, and really builds on the strengths that our low-income, uh, communities and families, uh, give to all of us. Um, this is the, the gloom and doom slide. I'm sorry. This is the, uh, the things that we've heard again and again, you know, the, uh, the status of Crescent Halls, the, uh, the nature of public housing and, and poverty in Charlottesville, and the tremendous, you know, opportunities that exist to help , uh, address and remedy some problems. That's why we look at, that's why I look at this redevelopment opportunity as truly one of the fundamental, single greatest things that this council, this community can do, uh, again, to, uh, redress the, the dynamics of poverty in Charlottesville. Um, CRHA is uniquely positioned in the population that we serve, in the role that we're missioned for, um, to impact, you know, both the quality and quantity of truly the, the needs of low-income and affordable housing clients within Charlottesville, and for the community as a whole. Um, and so doing, we've adopted very much a resident-directed approach. Uh, the individuals that are living, uh, the housing crisis day-to-day, generation to generation, are the individuals who are best capable of helping us make determinations of how to address low-income housing needs and affordable housing in Charlottesville. It's never happened, I think, in Charlottesville. It's, I'm not sure that it's happened anywhere nationally. It is fundamentally a residential, what we see redevelopment being, is also a fundamentally, um, economic opportunity to invest, both through the Section Three programs, through, um, support programs, not only in the bricks and mortar that go into public housing, but also in the individuals that live there, um, and work there. Um, you hear me say it from a time and again, I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate both the city's support and certainly the Public Housing Association resident support. Their guidance, um, and, and work has been absolutely phenomenal. Um, in the current redevelopment process, as far as taking a, a lead role in our resident engagement, they've been instrumental in helping us define, identify, um, development partners, uh, helped us, uh, taken the lead on Section Three planning and pointing us in directions of other programs, Section Three programs worth, uh, emulating. Um, and it's just been absolutely phenomenal. And since Elaine's here, I'll say legal aid's been good too, okay? So, um, we see redevelopment of our neighborhoods will be accompanied by a comprehensive approach to financial stability and wealth building for all our residents. Um, this is modeled after successful programs by LISC as well as self-help. We're looking at, again, the Section Three program, uh, support for job training. We'll look at the, the model that the Chicago Housing Authority has put together as, as the national template.
Mr. Duffield, can you do LISC also?
Oh, no.
Local, local investment?
Local initiative support corporation.
Well, yeah, what, what you said, that's right. Yep, that's right. Thank you.
I've been really working on that.
Yes.
But the, the same group that we just, um, are working with on the New Hill, development also, just for the publics.
Yep. Um, thanks. Um, expanded family self-sufficiency programs, resident home ownership, enhanced resident services to include health clinics, youth programs, services for seniors. Um, yeah. So how do we make, how do we make all of that happen? Well, take a look over the next few slides at the, at the key components, the team, the roadmap, the design development process, the financing and the city support, uh, needed. Uh, our partners involved here, our City of Charlottesville, Public Housing Association of Residents, we've got, uh, Riverbend Development is our, uh, partner, a development partner, um, working with Castle, um, VCDC and Arnold Design Studios, okay? Do we need to, do we need to take a break? Do we need to, is everybody on board?
No, please keep going.
We'll keep rolling. Great. Just some of the history involved. In, in 2010, we had the Wallace Roberts Todd, um, master planning work that has been done. The key criteria for coming out of that, need for, to address resident health and safety. Have to look at how do we redevelop in a way that's fiscally sustainable for the housing authority and for the, to support the community as a whole, and then what is the, uh, least intrusive, uh, least disruptive path for, uh, development for the residents that we serve. Um, following those key principles, uh, developing and augmenting those with, uh, principles that a redevelopment committee of the housing authority and FAR and the city, uh, have worked through over the past several months. We've identified first and foremost, the top priority that we've got is addressing the critical needs, uh, of the population at Crescent Halls. How do we, that, the current Crescent Hall structure doesn't meet the needs of those that we support. How do we address that? One of, one of the opportunities we also are looking at is, or pursuing diligently, hand-in-hand, is, uh, new construction on the South First Street, uh, vacant property down near the Ball Field. Um, we see that as one of a, one of the solutions for some individuals in Crescent Halls, um, along with the renovation of Crescent Halls. New construction at Levy Street, uh, Levy and Avon, um, our Phase Two, we'd look at redevelopment of South First Street, the existing structured South First Street neighborhood, Sixth Street community, um, all while we're pursuing a modernization track, uh, for properties at Madison Avenue, Riverview, and Mickey Drive. Um, and all of those, in doing so with the understanding that those properties probably are not primed for redevelopment in the near term, whereas others are. And then, uh, the final phase will involve, um, West Haven. Parallel to all of this is, yeah, an ongoing critical rehab and maintenance upgrades at West Haven and, uh, those properties not undergoing immediate redevelopment.
I have a, a question. I don't know if this is too in-depth, but can you give some kind of clarification as to what the difference between modernis- modernization, renovation, and redevelopment is?
Mm-hmm. Um, I'll tell you what, can we, can we?
Say that, okay.
Let's hold that for just a minute.
I'm sure this dollar figure is associated with all this.
Absolutely. Yeah, our design development process, Phase One, envisions a full redevelopment of Crescent Halls. 105 units, we'll have new construction at the South First Street vacant property by right up to approximately 80 units, one or two more. And then new construction by right at Levy-Avon of approximately 48 units. Crescent Halls, working in collaboration with FAR and the Crescent Halls Tenant Association under the guidance of the Redevelopment Committee. Again, the building itself no longer meets the needs. It's tremendously expensive to maintain and the population, our service population desires, deserves a facility better designed to meet their needs, okay? The approach that we are promoting is a redevelopment with residents in place. We've had a number of community engagement meetings involving the developer and the residents themselves. Walked through what renovation in place would look like, how it could be functioned, and followed models that have been used in other public housing authorities across the country, okay? What the project really looks like is a three-tiered, three-phased approach. Crescent Halls is really three towers that are joined together. It lends itself to an opportunity then to renovate one tower at a time. Each tower has about 35 apartment units. We would anticipate, yeah, moving, and don't hold me to a tower, one, two, three. I don't know what the sequencing will look like at this point. That's for the technical folks to take a look at. One of the things that we've got to do is, in order to pursue a renovation like this, under the plan that we've got in place, is have the property become unencumbered from HUD through what's called a demo-dispo process, okay? That's not a particularly lengthy process. There are some hoops that we have to jump through. We feel fairly confident that we can get that done fairly quickly. Once we have the approval of HUD for demo-dispo, which allows renovation, cease the lease-up. Under HUD guidelines, we're required to offer relocation vouchers to affected families. If you want to take a voucher and find housing in the private market, we're required to make that option available. Or, we anticipate also being able to rehouse folks in the unaffected portions of Crescent Halls or elsewhere within the public housing portfolio. So that's done, we begin vacating Tower One. Our development folks anticipate completion of a tower will take about four to six months, and at which time then we roll to Tower Two and begin redevelopment there as well. Total building renovation, believe, can be completed within 12 to 18 months, okay? So, what is renovation, okay? Renovation in this sense is comprehensively modernized apartment units. New unit layouts, new appliances, windows, doors, bathrooms, et cetera. Complete replacement of all water sewer, electric utility infrastructure within the buildings and on the site itself, okay? Complete replacement of roof and all heating and cooling systems, updated security systems, new exterior lighting and other site improvements. In this case, we'll update the CRHA offices that are on-site there. Enhanced exterior facades. Also create space opportunity for service, greater opportunities for service providers, community partners to actively operate within the building itself. Just to give you a sense of what this looks like, the drawings on the top half of each of these pages are the existing layouts of the Crescent Halls apartments. Down below are layouts, proposed layouts for revamped renovated apartment units in Crescent Halls.
So could you, why is this not considered a rehab? Because this sounds similar to what happens under RAD, is that what you're saying?
It can happen under RAD, it's not.
I understand that you're not doing that, but why isn't it considered a rehabilitation?
And what is RAD?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Another one, sorry.
It's gonna take a while to explain.
Yeah.
Give him the short.
Sure, I mean, I'm willing to, well, RAD, Rental Assistance Demonstration Project, whereby public housing subsidy is removed and families are served in the same building through vouchers, housing choice vouchers, as opposed to receiving direct subsidy on the rent rolls through our annual contribution contract with HUD. Why is this a renovation and not a rehabilitation? I'm not sure, is that semantics? Is that, yeah, I think that is, I think we're basically saying the same thing, yeah.
So, the process that the funding is attached to the address, right? And you're saying that under this demo and dispo, that that, when it, after the rehabilitation occurs, because you mentioned the process that you have to go through where families have the option to leave, that's the same setup as it's turning over.
Right.
Versus ensuring that families will, you know, no dislocation of any family member. So why is this set up that way?
Yeah, and that's straight HUD regulations says. And it's not our intent to dislo-
Relocate.
Yeah, to relocate, dislocate anyone from public housing, but, yeah.
And it's, there's also an automatic right to return. So basically, it's a temporary voucher that families can use.
That's true.
For rehousing, but they also get automatic right to return as soon as the new units are completed, should they wish to.
And I mean, that's, like, the Housing Authority can't force anyone to move back. Like, you have the right to be able to do so, you have the option to be able to come back. But, and that's really, well, our intention as, our being the Housing Authority, I guess as a member of the Housing Authority, if I put that hat on now, the intention is for the units or the new units and the new structures to be a significant improvement on what they currently have. So it would be, to a certain extent, incentivized for those who are currently, who are currently living in housing, then they get the vouchers, the temporary housing vouchers, to want to come back to the new structure.
Unlike concerns that you might face, say, if it were a private developer buying a property or something, no one is going to be displaced as they're becoming homeless, right? We have an absolute commitment that to all of our current and future residents that we house, provide housing and ensure that they are fairly and appropriately housed. The vouchers that were mentioned were just to, in order to be able to do one tower at a time, and because HUD, it's part of what HUD requires, and also it's only fair. But again, everybody has a right to return and certainly an option to choose to be rehoused within the public housing community while renovation is happening.
So has there been a partnership to find a location for people to be able to? Have we reached out to landlords or anything like that to?
Yeah, that's. No, that's an excellent point, and we'll touch on that shortly. One of the things we are planning to do is actually hire a relocation coordinator to help families sort of identify potential, potential homes both within and outside the housing authority as there's a relocation piece taking place. But just to do exactly what you're talking, be basically a caseworker for housing.
And I have a question, just coming, again, trying to just think through the questions that others will ask. And it sounds quite, like, really extensive what's happening. We're doing full removal of all the HVAC and lots, you know, and I just remember some of the other projects we've looked at. So I don't have the square footage, but this would be about, so if it's 105 units, it would be $133,000 a unit? Is that, for the total cost?
The data, the numbers vary based on the unit and what you want to put inside of the unit. There's several different variables that go inside it, that go into the specific number. The Housing Authority is right now at liberty to say, yeah, this is the dollar amount that it's going to be with each unit.
Well, I'm not saying that would be, because a vast percentage that would go for changes to the whole building that we distributed a cost. I'm just wanting to make sure that this is in the right, like, I remember with the Landmark Hotel whole package, we were stunned at what it costs to get a hotel, the amount of investment they put in a single room so that they, totally different example, but just the only example I have of thinking about a total cost per room when you're renovating something.
Because it's a big house in a five-star hotel.
I'm not saying, all that I'm saying is that that's my only reference point for when you do a renovation, when you think about the number of units that there are within it. I just want to make sure that this is within the right, it's a best practice, that it's the right number, that we're doing the right thing, that you're, I'm sure that there's been lots of checks applied to this. It's a reputable developer, I just want to make sure that.
No, no, that's an excellent point. And one of the key kind of checks and balance, if you will, is the fact that we anticipate using, we will use some amount of low-income housing tax credit equity. Within the low-income housing tax credit program, there are cost limitations in order to qualify to use. So, yeah, your per-unit cost has got to meet the standard set forth by HUD and the federal government for the litax. So, that's going to be one of your primary governors on that piece. Yeah, total estimated project cost, 14.2 million. We're anticipating tax credit equity on the low side of the scale. If we use a 4% program, we'd anticipate receiving about 5.2 million. If we're successful in obtaining 9% tax credits, we would anticipate receiving about $9 million in tax credit equity for the project. You can see, we have estimated hard debt and deferred developer fee, or deferred fees to the tune of 1.4 to 1.7 million. That leaves a delta, a gap, just on Crescent Halls, between 3.5 million and 7.6, again, depending on how the tax credit equity shakes out. But that gives you an overview of what we're looking at on the Crescent Halls redevelopment.
Mr. Duffield, one more question. And I know, I think one of the advantages working with a really established local developer who gets things done, I mean, that Riverbend has gotten a lot done on Deadline, so that's good. But, so, construction costs are killing a lot of projects. So, I just want to make, have we, has there been conversations about unintended consequences with run-up of construction costs? Because, I mean, West Second has happened, it's happening all over the city, it is happening across, you know, the economy's booming, so it's been, but particularly in Charlottesville, construction costs are averaging, there is a delta there that I just would want to make sure that that's baked in here so we don't have any surprises.
I'll defer to my technical team, but, yeah, point well taken, yeah.
And I think that's part of the reason why, just in conversations with Riverbend, Mr. Osteen, feel free to jump in as you see fit, but in discussions with Riverbend, one of the reasons why they wanted to, one, not only take this phased approach, is due to the fact that construction costs are so high, but also they want to try to expedite this project in terms of making sure that everyone has the financial commitment that's needed because, again, construction costs rise daily. So the sooner we can get the project started, i.e. commitment from the city and what's needed, i.e. going after and applying for different tax credits, i.e. philanthropic support, the sooner we can all come together and get this rolling, the cheaper, quote-unquote, it will be because of construction costs. Correct?
Absolutely, yeah. Great. And I'm skipping ahead a little bit, I know we're running close on time. Second priority, vacant lots at South First Street and Levy-Avon. We're looking, the Redevelopment Committee has identified these sites as prime potential for new development, for public housing, low-income housing, affordable housing, in that, yeah, it's vacant property, we don't displace residents and require the same level of relocation planning efforts that displacing or disturbing existing home sites requires. We create immediate new housing to help address the city's shortfall of affordable housing. Provides housing stock to ensure a one-to-one replacement of public housing units. Our design discussions have already begun with the South First Street residents and are expanding to include the Ridge Street Neighborhood Association as well as the Belmont Carlton Neighborhood Association. Site plan review for the South First Street vacant property commences this month with NDS. So, we're moving very rapidly on these areas. This is South First Street, but the, sort of, along the top is Elliott Avenue. Above that is the X property. On the left-hand side, you've got Mount Zion Church. And then the yellow is all of CRHA property in South First, okay? The area that we are working for new development is the base of the South First Street property. We're actually in the process now of subdividing the property out in the blue-shaded area. Got a total of about 4.2 net acres under current zoning. That gives us a proposed density, maximum density of about 89 units. Leaves seven and a quarter acres in the remaining developed area. The permitted density for the remaining area is 152 units, where we currently have 58. So we don't run afoul of, actually inadvertently increasing density per acre on the existing site. Our apartment mix that we would see, we're in the neighborhood of 35 one-bedrooms, 22 bedrooms, six three-bedrooms, six four-bedrooms, and 13 five-bedrooms.
Do you currently have five-bedroom units?
We do. I don't know, not many, I'd say less than 20.
13.
13.
13, no.
Total cost for South First Street, anticipate, again, all-new build, so about 12.7 million. Again, depending on the sources of tax credit equity, somewhere between 4.6 and 9 million in tax credits. On this property, given the unit mix that we would see, the property can probably support about 3.3 million in debt. Therefore, our sort of delta, our need at South First Street is anywhere from 364,000 to, well, call it 5 million, to bring that project to fruition. Similarly, Levy Avon Street, where the, um, community bikes and, uh, UACC, uh, operations are housed, and the city parking lot exists, uh, looking at, uh, potential of 48 units by right, unit mix will all be one-bedrooms and studios, a, as planned at this point. Total cost, about 7.8 million. Tax credit equity comes in between, uh, 2.9 and 7.5 million. Hard debt, the proj, that the project can support is somewhere in 362,000 to 1.8 million, and that leaves some amount of need that I can't see, but it's, you know. Oh, okay, all right. Redevelopment, kind of timeframes, we've been working on up to this point. Initial planning and setting priorities in 2017, 2018, we've released, uh, an RFQ and an RFP, uh, and are entering into, have entered into, are entering into, uh, MOU with a, a contractor, developed relocation principles. We're doing the environmental, uh, studies required particularly, well, at, um, Avon-Levy. We are surveying the properties to create the subdivisions, uh, plats necessary for South First Street. And earlier this evening, we, uh, took formal action to revive the Charlottesville Development Corporation, um, and get that vehicle up and running to serve as an instrument for redevelopment. As we look at the next several months, we get our demo-dispo applications in to HUD for Crescent Halls and the South First Street vacant area. We have li tech applications in place, uh, by March of this year. Look at li tech's, uh, the, yeah, tax credit syndication to take place sometime in the fall, um, of 2019. We anticipate, moving forward, construction permitting, uh, during 2019 with groundbreaking around this time next year to actually begin doing work to bring affordable housing.
What's the turnaround time to find out about the tax credits?
Uh, the submission goes in in March.
Mid-March.
Yeah, and it will be, your award somewhere in the summer, July, August is not, and so, you know, from that point-
You're assuming you're going to move forward, knowing you're for sure you're going to get guaranteed a certain percentage, but so you're going to press on-
Yes.
Hoping you're going to get the higher percentage.
Right.
If you didn't get the higher percentage, how does it work? Can you reapply the following year for one of these sites?
You, you could, you could reapply for that. Uh, the, the 4% tax credit is a non-competitive, uh, tax credit, it's, uh, so it's-
And is the competitive nature relative to other projects going on in your area? Or is it across the whole?
In the state.
In this whole state? So whether we have a abundance here, which we know we do, being requested, or whether it's across the state, doesn't really matter, the location?
Yeah, that, should, do you want to-
Actually, it's, isn't public housing in a different pool from, if you want to?
Yeah.
So we're not competing with local partners because public hous, tax credits for public housing are a different pool than, um, tax credits available to private entities and those available to nonprofits.
Even though you're partnering with a private entity?
Yes.
Yes.
And you have additional, you have units beyond public housing possibly in this mix?
Yes, but as, right, correct.
Okay.
Because they're doing it on behalf of the Housing Authority.
So PHA and Carlton Views won't compete with you.
That's correct.
Exactly. Maybe each other.
That's correct.
It's a different conversation.
Yep, later. But to get to this, and my understanding is, you have to have a complete site plan to submit with the tax credit request. So I guess we have to understand as a city what support we would have to do to, to help, that's really fast.
Yeah.
That's why it's a by right. Considering where we are today and-
It's quick.
Whatever engagement you want to do.
Yep.
March is not.
Well, the engagement has already begun.
Yeah.
And we're having the conversation now.
But I'm just saying, like, right now, there's, like, you told me, like, this week, you said, there's going to be the first review. I, I had an email about it, I can't remember what date it is, but, of the site plan, so that's, the site plan's in motion.
It's moving.
Yep.
And I'm just trying to get the sequence though relative to the resident engagement. So you're creating a site plan before you've had resident engagement?
Well, the site plans that are moving forward have had a significant resident engagement coming up to this point, yeah. Yeah, FAR has done an excellent job of, of leading that and, uh, yeah.
We've crossed the Ts and dotted the Is. Now we just need to open up the checkbook. It's a joke.
Open up the what?
Joke.
So-
Joke, ha, 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 ha.
What'd you say?
Didn't go over well.
Check question.
And so I, I do have a question. So what if, because again, it's competitive and I, I do have a sense of how long other groups have been working on getting their li tech applications in. What if VHDA doesn't grant you the li tech credits? What, do you have a, what's the next step?
Well, if, if we're not awarded 9% tax credits, okay, um, the 4% tax credit is, is not a competitive, uh, tax credit, okay? So it's a simple app, it's, no, it's, it's an application process.
It's guaranteed.
We're, we're fairly confident that, yeah.
So the support you'll need is just at the higher end?
That's correct.
Okay.
Right. All right.
And then-
But we're going to get the 9%, so it's all going to be a moot point.
Exactly.
And then what, what level of philanthropic report, like, support do you feel comfortable with right now, saying?
I, I don't, I know that there've been discussions about philanthropic support, I'm not sure what that looks like today.
Okay.
But I suspect that it will, I suspect it will be substantial.
And the, um, just, well, yeah, there's a, so, um, the, the proposal is that these funds would come from the Affordable Housing Fund, right? We have also used the equity, but is that the, that's the, as, in terms of a regular liquid account that we do every year, not, not the CIP?
So we've used, well, okay, so to answer all those questions, we've used, um, a portion of the equity, packaged money, so that, that 2.5 million over five years is essentially $500,000 a year. So we've used, um, a portion of those funds. I think it's important for us to, yes, look at the Affordable Housing Fund, to, uh, use resources from there, but I think in totality, we're going to have to look at more than just those two pools. So yes, we will need to look at allocations in the CIP. We also need to encourage staff to bring us back recommendations to look at other streams and sources of revenue. If that means, um, the different tax stream, if that means that we're looking outside the box, um, maybe taking away or, or cutting down our budget in, in other buckets or pockets right now to allocate some of those funds into specifically building affordable housing for our low-income housing residents, then we need to do so, but I think it needs to be, to a certain extent, an all-hands-on-deck approach to ensure that this level, or excuse me, this segment of the population gets the housing that they deserve. Because to, for a long time, it's kind of just been an afterthought. There's a, there's a competency, um, there from amongst the board members, as well as the administration and the staff. There is a plan that we have not seen the likes of in regards to how the Housing Authority is moving forward, and I think now is more time, or the best time than we've had in maybe ever to be able to put our resources behind this plan to ensure that the residents get what they need.
I appreciate that. Just to go back to my, um, the, what I started at in terms of the policy, what our, what our approach is, might sound really wonky, but I think it's really important to figure out what our plan is and how we communicate to the public. We created, I think, over 200 units of affordable housing last year when we, after we had doubled the-
Affordable housing.
The, the affordable housing, after we had doubled the, um, after we doubled the, the spend that we do every year, but it sort of got lost. It was hard to tell that story in one place as a result of one thing that we're doing, because there was one pocket here, and then it was Carlton Views, it was AIP, and it was, and I, I learned in that, it's quite, it's very important to have it come from one thing where you can say to the public, here's what we're doing, here's, here's what we're making decisions. So I'm not so sure that that, I think it might be better to say, if we're doing this MOU and we are establishing in there the guidelines, when we choose to help CRHA with a project, why, how, when, what's the process, what are the standards, we want to help, maybe it all does come from the Affordable Housing Fund. So maybe we make a policy decision about growing that one place, and then we make a decision within that fund that we have decided in this era to help CRHA, especially because of history, because of the president, because of lots of things. And we don't parcel it out from a bunch of different places. We make, I'm just suggesting that, I think that it would be one way so that everybody would understand what we're doing and we're not doing it ad hoc, although I get the benefits of that, we, sometimes we do that.
No, I like where you're going with the policy. Mr. Murphy has something that he wants to add.
Just-
I like your comments though, Mr. Signer. Mr. Murphy?
I think that, from a budget perspective, that what we're talking about in the way of redevelopment, all of that lives in the CIP, just to, you know, clarify a little bit about what Dr. Bellamy said. Whether that is, um, a prioritization of the Affordable Housing Funds, which is cash-funded by the city.
Right.
Right? Or if it is bonded, which is debt. It's still part of our capital program. Operational expenses, uh, would be more along the lines of things that we've done with human services supports or, um, other, uh, help that we've provided through different departments. But to be clear, you know, the, it's a little bit, uh, there's the financing part of it, and whether that's cash or bonded, and then I think, Mr. Signer, you're talking about, wh, what does the arrangement look like? That, that's a little bit of an apple and an orange to me. There is how much, and then there is the, um, are you specifying this in a MOU or a performance agreement? Is it a grant? Is it a loan? Is, you know, does the city have, um, you know, uh, the ability to issue all of the monies reimbursement style, or does it come upfront? Uh, you know, is the governance model of the board the same, or does the city, you know, gain any influence in that model? I mean, those are all the things that need to be decided. The first thing we need to tackle is, what are the dollar amounts? And what I heard tonight was ballpark at the high end, 15 to 16 million dollars from the city.
For Crescent Halls?
No, for all three.
So wait, what do you say?
For all the projects that are currently in kind of our five-year viewfinder.
And right now, just a-
You're talking about the bottom.
And right now, we, we spend, because, so, really quick, so, so right now, we, our Affordable Housing Fund is 3.2 million dollars, and we doubled it last year, and we're committed, I think we committed doing that for five years, it, it was over a period of time that we said, we as a matter, we're going to double this. So we could, I believe that's 3.2.
It may be 3.4.
3.4.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we agree, yeah. So 3.4 is the actual spending.
Some of that is spent, but not in the years to, in the future, I don't know.
Not in the out-years.
Right, okay.
So I have a question about, um, in terms of getting council, um, prepared to make a decision about bonding, what would the proposal be from, um, you?
Well, first of all, I mean, we're, we're seeing the numbers tonight about what this looks like, uh, at the 4% tax credit level. And while I said 15.2, I see that, uh, we've got an additional item on here, which is South First Street Phase Two, which was, there wasn't a breakout slide about that. And I don't know whether we could potentially envision that happening during the first five-year cycle or not, uh, but, uh, what I would imagine, uh, would happen is some blend of what I heard, private philanthropy and potentially city funding. As it stands right now, um, the team has been working on the CIP for some time, uh, and I do think that part of the solution has to be not necessarily in new dollars because of where we are with our debt ratios and all that. And so I'm looking at right now a proposal that would include an ongoing, uh, amount in the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund of 1.9 million dollars each year, $3 million each year, uh, or $15 million over a five-year cycle for the Housing Authority, and then we'll talk about, uh, the PHA project, uh, down the road. These are, of course, drafts, and what I'm here tonight is to hear from you all about whether we're in the right strategy, whether we're in the right ballpark, uh, before we really frame the entirety of that CIP. Remember, we're leaving over $100 million in projects unfunded in that CIP when we do that.
And I would just, I, for council's benefit, um, CRHA came to this redevelopment planning effort, very much aware with the, with competing interests, uh, around the committee, said, look, we ought to approach it this way, we ought to, we ought to take this tack. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, we're dealing with a building at Crescent Halls that does not meet the needs of the people who live there.
And not just Crescent Halls, not to interrupt you, but we're, I think, um, what I'm hearing from our end is, we are still not looking at this as, uh, um, long-term strategy, and I don't hear that we are thinking outside of the box, we're going to have to do more than we have ever done. And so I think we just have to wrap our, wrap our heads around that.
So there-
That it just has to be really different than in terms of the funding that we're looking, looking at.
So I think, to, so to that point, there are discussions in regards to how we look outside the box, a much more comprehensive approach. I think before, um, that discussion is had though, we need to, one, ensure that the Housing Authority is for sure set to, to get what they need, so that we can make sure that this happens specifically with the first priority being Crescent Halls. Now, Mayor Walker, I think your point is absolutely well-taken, and I assure you, I know we've had conversations before, but just for public information, there's been members of CLEC, um, there's been members of FAR, we, in the Housing Authority, we've ha, all had different conversations and discussions of, um, Habitat for Humanity, PHA, so forth, about how we come up with a comprehensive total, because the, to be honest, the number, if you truly want to look at bringing about affordable housing throughout the city and ensuring that you have the 4,000 units that we currently are unders, are short of right now, that number has been estimated to be around 120 million dollars. So yeah, if you're, if you want to talk about how we go outside the box, that's a discussion again that we will have moving forward, but I think for tonight and right now, we have to ensure that the, the first of these Crescent Halls, which has been produced by the Housing Authority, get squared away. Does that make sense? Or like, does that hit on what you're saying, Mayor Walker? Like, does that touch on it?
I, I hear you. I mean, I think that we should be able to look at how we can fund, um, the request if the, um, developers and the Housing Authority think that it's something that can get done.
Okay.
I do want to make sure I really understand this. So the gap funding that's required from the city of Charlottesville, if you get the 9% li tech credit for all of the four projects up there, is going to be 16.5 million.
But that doesn't include private contributions?
That's right.
Yeah, so that's the maximum.
Yeah.
That you envision.
Right.
So if you, if we give, if you get the 4% credit li tech, then our gap funding that we need to be prepared to provide is 26 million. I just want to get the ranges right. And I'm not even looking at the last column.
Right, right.
So I'm, I, I'm reflecting back on the, on the CIP work session that we had over the summer, and as I recall, we were looking at, you know, a $50 million bond issuance was, was too much, we couldn't do that, but 20 to 30 million was in the realm of possibility. I just want to bring that back, when we had that conversation, Mr. Murphy.
But I think we need more information, because even the conversation that we had outside with the gentleman that was a friend of yours, he thought, and you said that this was his specialty, that the 50 million-
I'm sorry, which conversation was that?
When we were outside, um-
Oh, that's, that was about taxes.
He said that the 50 million dollar bond was very doable. He said that the 50 million dollar bond was doable when we were having the conversation.
Then I really don't think that we can use that.
I'm not saying use that, but I'm saying get some information from whoever we would like to.
So all I'm asking is, is, is for that. I'm asking to find out, as I recall, we were ta, talking about a 20 to 30 million dollar bond issuance that was something that we probably could do by leveraging our housing fund and being somewhat innovative in our financial arrangements.
And I would say that if you look- And I would say that if you look at the five-year CIP and what the potential expenditures are from the city, and you look at the Affordable Housing Fund and the Housing Authority allocation and a project at Friendship Court, that we are talking about in that cycle, over thirty million dollars for just those three things. So, I, I, I do think that we're there.
Mayor Walker and...
If I can just finish, I would say that where we are numbers-wise right now is me without any change in revenues or tax increases and observing your debt policies, which is to stay under ten and target nine. And this puts us in three of the five years over nine? Correct, so.
So, in layman's terms, under your draft, because it's obviously not anything set in stone, we would be able to meet the needs or get really close to meeting the needs as proposed from the Housing Authority?
Well, there's different needs depending on the outcomes, it's a lot.
So, 'cause I'm, I'm just not clear, maybe it's just not clicking with me in regards to the wish percentage.
I, I will tell you that, as I said, the, the draft budget as it stands tonight, and the big part of this meeting is to have you inform the draft budget, is fifteen million to CRHA, six million to Friendship Court, and continuing roughly ten million dollars worth of Affordable Housing Fund. And in my mind, that means nine hundred thousand dollars every year for the next five years for the CEASRAP program. And a million dollars to still give to any other affordable housing projects that come down the line. You may tell me that you want that prioritized to some project like the Housing Authority, which changes things. But I, I presumed in the draft, which may not be what you want priorities-wise, that you still want other folks to come to the table with different ways of addressing affordable housing.
So, Mr. Duffield, if that was to go through, how would that affect what you're proposing? I know it's obviously varies based on whether we get the nine percent, four percent, and so forth. But would that get us to where we need?
It would certainly, it would certainly get us a lot further than we are today, right? I think it, I think it would help us absolutely address the concerns around Crescent Halls.
But the other side.
Does it get us, I don't know if it gets us to Levy, Avon. But at this point, again, our primary concern is, is Crescent Halls.
I would say by the numbers we were presented tonight, it would make the city the full funder, which I don't think we need to be with private philanthropy, of all three of the projects that were given breakout slides, but not Phase Two of South First Street. So, it would do South First Street, Ball Field, Avon Levy, and Crescent Halls at the four percent level, based on the presentation we received.
Right.
A couple, a couple more questions along the slides. So, I just wanna, so what's the total, the total number of, of residents who would, if all, if all four projects were done, how many people or, and families? I mean, 'cause there's some that are multifamily. What's the, the number of folks who would?
The units.
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, before and after units, not count.
Right.
So, it's one sixty-three to the sixty-nine new.
Okay.
Because this does not include any other properties beyond those that we've discussed. So, there's no West Haven, there's no Madison.
Not yet.
But why wouldn't we prioritize CRHA? Why, if, if they could deliver on producing the housing that's needed?
Me? I, I just, I was still looking for an answer to how many, how many folks would, would possibly live in all those units that told them the side?
People.
People, yeah.
Because of the bedroom counts, I see.
Bedroom counts, I'm just, just trying to think about, or a range.
We don't have that yet.
Yep.
Because it would be broken down by how many, like, what kind of units you're gonna build, X amount of one bedroom, two bedroom, five bedroom.
I think that's, I think that's fairly, I think that's important for the, for the public to understand, 'cause it, 'cause it would be, and the other, the other thing that to me and Mr. Murphy was getting at it is I took, the developer I managed reached out to all of us, we had a call today, and the, the philanthropy piece, so I get the ask of, of the city. There, there is a big philanthropy piece, and as we're doing the sausage making of our budget, and there is the CIP, and we're gonna hear from the schools, you know? Because there's, there's a lot of expensive CIP projects that have a lot of constituencies in them, so oftentimes we have to put them together. And I think one of the questions will be how much possible expansion is there in the philanthropy piece if the city did step up and help some, but maybe not the entire piece, as we look at all of other priorities, work with staff, and we get advice, but we did help some. And I think that's, and I, I understand that you're reluctant to, to get too specific about that, but, but it, I, I know that there is flexibility. These are, these are people who are very generous and really wanna help and...
And in addition to that, I mean, similar to our approach on the, on the previous investments that the city's made with us, these, these development projections, they, they include no developer fee. I mean, so there's not, there's not anyone turning a profit on public housing. This is direct investment back to those who need it. And while, yeah, there is a sizable delta there, remember, there is other investment coming in through tax credit equity as well, but it's...
I think it's really dangerous for us to, to, to a certain extent, kinda counting the philanthropic, the philanthropic aspect of it, because we don't know how that's gonna work. And yeah, people can say a lot of different things, like, we wanna be generous in terms of giving money, but I still think the city, like, we have an obligation, regardless of what, the, any philanthropy or philanthropic effort, we have an obligation to make sure that we take care of the residents. It's great if someone else wants to donate money, but we still have to make sure that this gets done.
And we also have to look at all the years that it wasn't done.
Correct.
And, and I'm sorry, I've gotta, I need to, Audrey Oliver has been begging to have just a little mic time.
Okay. And we are at time, so we have to, about five more minutes.
I just wanna say that, you know, we, we've worked really, really hard in a very short time.
Yeah.
And we are old, this, this, it's like you said, it hasn't been done in over years. This is the closest we ever come. We've made, you know, friends with HUD, we've been there twice to talk to them about all that we need to do. You know, it's just, it's, it's important that, that this happened. The residents have, 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 you know, dotted us for years and years and years. We've gotten close to them, you know, they've had their input into what we're doing. And they're, you know, they're ready. We all are ready to do this. And yes, the city should help. There's no reason why the city shouldn't help. We, as residents, we went out to look for money. We went out to look for professional people to come in and to help us do this. And we've had that. And, and I just feel like that, that you all need to honor this. This, this is an honor to all of us, the city, to all our folks, to everybody. So, win or lose, it's a winner.
And thank you, Ms. Oliver. And I do have one question, though, about the Levy project, because as I recall, that's always been talked about as also an opportunity to have some income generation. Is that gonna be a mixed-use project? So, it will generate revenue on an ongoing basis for the Housing Authority?
Yes.
Okay.
So, one of the...
Although, I just wanna be, wanna be clear that we actually, you know, in all of this, there is a necessity to think long-term about how are we going to maintain these properties? And so, you know, income generation streams are essential part of our planning, but they are very much focused less on the construction costs and more on maintaining the buildings and the properties in the long term, so we don't get to where we are today with zero real reinvestment in capital and maintenance. And so, really wanting to build income streams that allow the Housing Authority to support low-income residents of Charlottesville well into the future with healthy, safe units and a strong agency that can provide the services that our residents really wanna have.
Agreed.
All right.
Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Council, yes.
At the end.
So, we'll start at...
Public comments at the end.
Oh, comments.
You gotta do PHA first, Tom.
Okay, we'll take public comments about this first session. Are there comments?
But, Kai, Mayor Walker?
But don't we have to get ready?
They don't wanna, I guess, wait.
I mean, the way we split it up? I know. No.
Five minutes?
Go ahead.
Connie Rosenbaum.
Yes. Oh, sorry, yes. Come here.
I live at Hardy Drive, West Haven. Y'all are asking stupid-ass questions about one bedroom, two bedroom. Who's gonna live in one bedroom? Who do you think's gonna live in a one bedroom? A one person, an adult probably, like me, in the elderly section at high-rise at Crescent Hall? We are now living in what is basically called a dump. If y'all want to come and see some of our apartments and how bad they are, bring your ass over to West Haven or Crescent Hall, then you can see exactly what shape we are living in, instead of sitting up and talking about what needs to be done or what you think needs to be done, Mike Signer, when you can get it done. And stop pussyfooting around and start doing something about it. Y'all living in million-dollar mansions, most of you, and we living in, in a dollar dumps. And I'm not saying, I'm, I'm thankful to God that I have a roof over my head, but right now, I'm living in through black mold, trying to go through allergy shots that are not working. I'm fighting cancer on, on top of all this other shit that I'm going through. And it doesn't seem like nothing's getting done but a bunch of talking. So, it's time to stop talking and start doing something about it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is George Johnson, and I reside at eight oh two A Hardy Drive, and I'm also a part of the redevelopment commit, committee. And I guess what I would like to say to you, Mr. Signer, is that it's been done all over the country where cities invest their money into the community, because public housing is a part of the community. The difference is, is that we get a subsidy from HUD, and the mandate says they have to have an independent board. However, we live in the city. Anything you do affects us. And so, if you do wanna have a, an understanding of, you know, what you all should do, I think as a counselor, because we don't have ward system, as a counselor, you all are responsible for the whole entire city, including public housing. And so, the other thing that I wanted to say about Crescent Halls is that even though there are options, there are more than one options, right? So, one of the options is, because of relocation and the whole regulation, you can offer, you have to offer people an option with a voucher, but you don't, they don't have to take the voucher. You cannot rent a certain amount of units, right? And you will still get subsidy for it, and then you can just revolve people into the units that are rehabbed. So, you don't re, and, and the reason why we supported that idea, because one, it's an eighteen-month thing, two, you wouldn't have to move people out of their neighborhood or whatever. But if they do wanna take a voucher, which there is some, there are three vouchers, I can't remember the three vouchers, but one of them stays with the residents and as long as they don't accept something else. And then there is another one where if they take it, then they can't come back, right? If they take the voucher and move out, then they can't come back. And that's not what we advocating. We're not advocating that. We want people to stay in the unit if that's what they wanna do. However, on South First Street, the Ball Field, if we can get that done, that is for the residences of, of South First Street. This is why we said, let's do some, some different tiers of one, two, and three, and four bedrooms, because that will be longevity for when you get to West Haven or any of the other site where you can relocate them and then develop West Haven. And the reason why we're looking at rehabbing Mickey, Six, and Riverside, is that those are primarily three bedrooms, and so we can rotate people and use those as relocation. So, so you don't really have to go out and just like, you know, spend money to have a relocation site, but to use exactly what we have. So, there is a plan. The thing is that the Housing Authority ain't got no money, and HUD ain't giving them no money. And so, we need help from our community to do this. And I am, you know, I am very selfish when it comes to West Haven. And West Haven is what I primarily wanted to get redeveloped, but then when I look at Crescent Halls, you know, and see what they're going through, we made that and I committed, and it's pushing really hard that the first thing we do with redevelopment is Crescent Hall. I don't care how we do it. I, I thought you should knock the building down, but then you have other people that came back and said, no, it can be rehabbed. Two years versus eighteen months, that's what I'm supporting. So, if you all can help to support that going forward, it will be great and it will be helpful. But this is the closest we have come to seeing something about redevelopment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any other comments?
I don't want the public, no, this is important, because I just had that conversation today with someone, and it just really irritates me that people can't get it, is that even though we are trying to preserve three hundred and seventy-six ACC public housing units, but we are going to have to build more, because we know the other units, because we know that there are people on the waiting list, there are people that's overhoused, people that's underhoused. I don't want the public to think that you all are only investing in just building public housing. It will be market-rate housing, it will be home ownership, the whole nine yards. But right now, for those people who say the city ain't doing nothing and the Housing Authority ain't doing nothing, we are trying to do something with Crescent Halls.
All right, so we're gonna take a quick break and get started with PHA. Sorry for the little delay.
I'm going to do, we're going to just start off by just a quick round of introductions, just so you know who's up here at the table here. So I'm Sunshine Maithan, I'm the Executive Director of Piedmont Housing Alliance.
I'm Claudette Grant, the Community Organizer at Friendship Court.
I am Zafar Khan, and I am a member of the Advisory Committee Board and also the Resident.
Hi, I'm Crystal Johnson, I'm a resident of Friendship Court and also on the Resident Committee.
Tamara Wright, Friendship Court Resident, and I also serve on the committee.
Great, thank you. Claudette's going to kick us off with a few slides, and then we'll jump into the update, and we'll go from there.
Good evening, Mayor Walker and members of the council. As Sunshine said, thank you so much for having us here today. I will also add that we have several members of staff from Piedmont Housing Alliance, and also some board members are here as well. I'd like to start us off by providing a brief historical context regarding Friendship Court, and then provide some information about the Advisory Committee. In the 1960s Charlottesville was not unlike many cities in our country, and we had to grapple with urban renewal and the redevelopment of areas that were said to be substandard. Many of us are aware of the controversial redevelopment of Vinegar Hill, a neighborhood where African-American families lived, worked, and owned businesses. That was demolished and later redeveloped with housing for those who were displaced from redevelopment of their community. This is the thorn in our side that still lives fresh in the memories of many in the African-American community. Charlene Green gives a wonderful presentation about this that I recommend for those who have not heard it already. In 1978 Garrett Square, now known as Friendship Court, was built by a private owner to provide additional low-income subsidized housing. In 2001, the original owner decided to sell the property. In order to preserve a subset of affordable housing in Charlottesville, the National Housing Trust Enterprise, located in Washington DC, in partnership with Piedmont Housing Alliance, the local presence of the partnership, purchased and renovated Friendship Court in 2002. In 2015 and 2016 Piedmont Housing Alliance, in collaboration with the National Housing Trust Enterprise, and a nationally recognized team of designers, planners, and affordable development experts, started work on a master plan and a redevelopment of Friendship Court. When I came on board approximately three years ago, one of my first tasks was to form an advisory committee that focused on residents. We learned from a few organizations around the country that having a group of residents who we could go to for feedback and connections with the community would be a great way for resident engagement and empowerment during the redevelopment process. We decided to empower the residents and hold an election where the residents would elect among themselves residents to serve on the advisory committee. During the election, ten residents were nominated for seven seats. Our top vote getter was a high school resident who got all her friends and relatives to come out and vote for her. We now have nine resident representatives, two of whom are youth in high school, and six non-residents who represent various areas of expertise. You will recognize Kathy Galvin and Mike Murphy. As you will hear later in this presentation, this group of leaders are dedicated and committed to the work we are doing. The advisory committee meets monthly and often more times, depending on the work and decisions we must make. The residents are taking their time from family, jobs, and self to participate in this process. So we pay them for their time because we feel it is important that they know we value the time and service they are spending to work on the redevelopment. Being a part of the process, getting to make decisions such as interviewing and choosing who the architect and contractor are for Phase One of the redevelopment have been pivotal turning points for the advisory committee. The committee has also spent the last several months making specific decisions regarding the outdoor amenity spaces for Phase One. Sunshine will share this work with you a little later. These are just a few examples of the decisions this team has made. Over the last couple of years, we have engaged in a variety of activities such as touring similar housing sites in Washington DC to see examples of what we plan to redevelop. We have also looked at early childhood centers, which we are planning to add onsite. All of these activities and processes not only help to build leadership, but also helps to inform the committee so they can make better decisions. We have had many community meetings as we have worked through the master plan and redevelopment processes. We have engaged in a variety of surveys, door-to-door discussions, and I am located onsite, all providing different ways for us to engage with the Friendship Court community. As we have listened to residents, we have heard about the need to have affordable housing options for folks who no longer qualify for Section 8 housing but wish to continue living in Charlottesville. We know there is a history of economic and social isolation, outdated buildings, and a stigmatized site. All of this and more has been our inspiration for redevelopment of Friendship Court. Sure, we have had our ups and downs, but as you will see when you hear from a few residents shortly, the advisory committee is a cohesive team, and they have learned to work well together. The sense of being a part of the process and decision-making entity has given the residents a sense of ownership and buy-in to their futures. This is something many of them had not experienced before. This process has taught us the importance of allowing the residents to be the power of change. I will now turn the presentation over to Sunshine Maithan, who will provide details regarding what we have been doing over the last year and a half as we move towards redevelopment.
Sorry. Thank you Claudette. So if you remember, this is an example of the site, shoot, thank you. This is an example of the master plan that was released in late 2016 after the master planning process that had been going on for the previous 18 months. Starting roughly 12, 14 months ago, we started a pretty in-depth feedback and listening process to understand whether or not what was proposed in the master plan was actually the right solution. Did the planning process get it right? And there are a few key themes that emerged of challenges that people identified, both from within Friendship Court and without. One of the first and foremost was that it was proposed to be seven phases, which essentially meant a 12- to 14-year period of redevelopment. That's incredibly long period of time if you're living onsite or living effectively in a construction zone for that period. It meant essentially generational change in terms of, you know, young kids who are there onsite and potentially being there throughout, knowing construction only in their entire lives. And then candidly, from the nonprofit developer's side, it also introduced a lot of risk because when you are planning redevelopment over 12 to 14 years, you essentially are hoping for a stable economy that entire time, and that's something you can't guarantee. So that was one of the first, most important issues that we had to rethink about. Another was that the early childhood center, although the idea of the early childhood center was the right concept to hold on to, the fact that it was put in Phase Seven was problematic for a lot of reasons. But first and foremost, that's a benefit that has the potential to actually impact the entire community, and bringing it earlier into the project allows for that benefit to cross and affect everyone right at the beginning. I will say, one of the other key decisions that was the right decision, though, as far as the phasing goes, is that the choice to pursue phasing as an approach was critically the right decision, just the number of phases was a little bit off. The phasing allows us to rebuild with that with zero displacement. No one has to move off-site while we're going through the construction process. One of the other significant concerns, particularly from residents and families with children onsite, is that the proposed master plan only proposed kind of more standard multifamily apartment-style buildings. And for many families with children, that was not an ideal solution. If you're familiar, almost everyone essentially lives in townhome configurations now, which means that they have front doors or back doors, or in some cases both, that open onto public space, sidewalks, and families with children really appreciate that, from a safety perspective, from an ease perspective of having their kids go in and out on a regular basis. And so the original master plan didn't allow for that sort of townhome typology. One of the other big challenges is that the proposed income mix was essentially adding, replacing the existing 150 Section 8 units, adding an additional 75 to 80 affordable, and then adding 370 market rate. So even though there was no physical displacement that was going to be happening onsite, this introduced huge potential risk for, or almost guarantee, of social displacement and tearing apart of the existing social fabric. The advisory committee that Claudette was referring to, and we have some members here, and they'll speak here in a little bit, they have been extraordinary partners through this process, and certainly since my arrival here about 15 months ago. They had already gelled as a team and had some clarity on what they wanted to see changed and move forward with, but they have, as Claudette mentioned, they really have become a cohesive whole in their thinking and planning process. That doesn't mean that they always agree necessarily on every single point, but the process of working through trade-offs and compromises has been extraordinary to witness and be part of. For the last 14, sorry, back up here, for the last 12 months or so, we have been taking those initial concerns that I just laid out there, and a number of others as well, that were somewhat more minor, but those larger initial concerns, and start to understand what's possible on the site to address those concerns but also achieve their goals. We have gone through, I don't know how many different charrettes and design exercises to come to where we are now, but it has been an extraordinary process of watching the growth and decision-making of an impressive group of folks who are, you know, creating the future for their lives in terms of where they live. Sorry, there we go. So this is the plan, and I want to talk a little bit about how it responds to the initial concerns. So as I mentioned, seven phases was too long. So we tried to look at, we had to maintain the phasing approach in general, of course, because we wanted to make sure that there is zero displacement. But how do you compress the number of phases as much as you possibly can? And we actually, we looked at a number of different scenarios, and we actually looked at going even down to three phases. But what we noticed is when that started to happen is that other priorities started to be more significantly compromised when you reduced to that number of phases. So four phases ended up becoming the least number we could do while also balancing other resident priorities. The early childhood center is proposed to be in Phase One, so we're bringing it right to the very beginning of the project. That is absolutely a benefit to everyone right from the outset, not only from a high-quality early childcare perspective in terms of the services and resources for the children onsite, but also as a potential job creator for families, for residents onsite to become teachers at the childhood center. And then we've also introduced a mix of housing types. So in this diagram, the purple represents that multifamily apartment style, but all the red represents townhomes. So it is a complexity of housing types to represent different needs and desires onsite. And I know it's a little bit difficult to see the lines of the phasing, but within each phase, there is actually a mixture of multifamily and townhomes. The balancing process not only thought about the whole of how the whole site comes together, but also each individual phase, how it stands alone on its own. And then we also rebalanced the future resident income mix. So yes, absolutely replacing the existing 150 Section 8 units. It's also adding additional 150 additional affordable units, and then 150 market rate. And that balance of roughly a third, third, third feels, and the residents can speak more to this, feels like the right balance for them in terms of the community they want to be a part of in the future. So all that planning process to get this basic framework was finalized around January, February of this year, 2018. But that was just working with, in particular with the advisory committee. So then it was, we had to take this concept out to the surrounding community as a whole, the surrounding Friendship Court community, all the other residents, to make sure that we were on the right track. So we held a series of six different meetings, and then beyond that, ended up going door-to-door multiple times over between February, March, and April to bring the plan in front of residents and to make sure that they supported the concept. And the response was overwhelmingly positive. It was pretty extraordinary, and probably the most common comment we heard was, okay, so when are you getting started? We've been talking about it for a long time, and they want to see it happening. So, oops, back up here. So I'm going to get into a little bit of details, and I apologize for those in back who might not be able to see some of this. I think there are a couple of handouts that are floating around that some of this is printed on. So for Phase One, you'll see the multifamily building up here, the townhomes down here, and the early childhood center here. In total, that's 106 units, 76 which will be affordable, 46 replacing Section 8 units. And essentially what happens is these, this housing gets built first on the open green space onsite. Once this is built, these 46 families move into this housing. That will, and then that will also be adding additional 30 homes, affordable homes, and then additional 30 market rate.
Is the purple the market rate?
No, the goal right now is to actually have it all be integrated.
Gotcha.
The purple represents multifamily apartment style, the red represents townhomes.
Gotcha.
But to be integrated throughout both those typologies.
How will you determine which residents get the townhomes, or which just get the...
That's a great question, which we have still not fully tackled yet, but it will most likely be a lottery system in some way. Because there's probably not any other fair way to do it, really.
Okay.
And we have heard, you know, of course, that there are families who want to be in those townhomes. We've also heard there are families who want, or family members who want to be in the apartment style in particular as well, maybe because they have mobility issues, they want elevator access to their units. So there is a blend of desires. How it pans out ultimately in terms of how many want to be in townhomes versus multifamily, we don't quite know yet. That's to come. In addition to the housing that's getting built, I talked about the early childhood center, that will be the ground floor of that orange building there. On the upper floor will also be a replacement for a new community center onsite, and then Piedmont Housing Alliance's headquarters downtown as well. In effect, when you talk about Phase One being 76 homes would be affordable out of the 106, that represents about 72% affordability in Phase One. You can see where we are in the timeline right now. We are in the middle of permits and drawings, so we submitted for our site plan back in September in 2018. We've gotten our first round of comments, are about to submit back for our second round, second submittal. Our goal and expectation is to have an approved site plan by February when we apply for tax credits in March. The timeline for Phase One in general is, once we get the tax credits, and I'll respond to some of the questions that were coming up in the last session as well, you find out in mid-June to early July when tax credits are awarded. And then there is a syndication process. You have to sell those tax credits to an equity investor. It's possible to be able to pull that off by the fall of 2019, but it's probably a little bit more realistic to assume that it's going to be closer to the beginning of 2020 is when that actually comes to fruition, and construction would start in the first quarter of 2020. And with 14 to 18 months of construction time, that means before end of 2021 is when residents move into Phase One. Phase Two is roughly speaking 100 units, and I'll say roughly speaking because most of our effort has been focused on the overall site plan, and then in particular the last few months, just Phase One, because that's what's right in front of us. Phases Two, Three, and Four will take some more refinement before we have real numbers on those, but approximately, we estimate about 100 units of housing overall in Phase One. Again, again, a mixture between multifamily and townhome style, with 54 families in this case moving into Phase One, with 23 new affordable units, 23 market rate. Again, Phase Two will be about 77% affordable. Opportunities for commercial, we still have not determined that yet, but there's an opportunity on the ground floor of this multifamily building along Monticello for there to be potential commercial space. What purpose that will serve, we, again, we have work yet to do on that front, but that's a possibility. You'll see Phase Two is intentionally sequenced so we do not have overlapping construction timelines so that we can maintain zero displacement throughout, but it does mean that we are going to, in order to facilitate moving as quickly as we can, Phase Two planning will really begin even before construction begins on Phase One. It requires that level of planning throughout. Phase Three, we have 50 final families left here to move into Phase Three. Again, we estimate about 100 homes for Phase Three, with 25 new additional affordable units, 25 market rate with an overall 75% affordability in Phase Three. Again, we have opportunities for ground floor commercial in these multifamily buildings, but we don't know exactly whether it's going to be yet. In particular, not only did we, the site planning process was not only focused on the housing, of course, but on the overall amenities throughout the community. So going back to Phase One, going back to Phase One for a moment, you know, we're taking up all the open green space that's onsite right now. So we have to be very conscientious and thoughtful about how we bring green space back in, in particular because for at least the next couple of phases, there won't be any significant increase of open green space. So there's a deep amount of care and thoughtfulness that has gone into the design of the open green space for Phase One. As we move into Phases Two and Three, you'll notice a large central green space in here, which we hope and plan for that to be ultimately a future city public park as part of the whole community. And then by the end of Phase Three, everyone's rehoused. So everyone from this portion of the site will be moving into Phase Three, and everyone who's onsite now will be rehoused. So essentially by the end of 2025, you can see the timeline up there, everyone's rehoused, which then leads with an overall added 78 affordable units, replacing the 150 existing with an average 75% affordability. Phase Four, we have not spent tremendous amount of time on yet, largely because we've been so heavily focused on making sure we got the housing right for the existing residents. And because everyone's going to be rehousing those first three phases, that's where the energy has gone so far. Nonetheless, the goal was to at least get to 150 additional affordable units, and if you'll notice, by the end of Phase Three, we've only added about 78 affordable units. So Phase Four, we have to at least add, you know, roughly 75 additional affordable units, possibly more, depending on the total amount of housing that goes into that site. But again, we have not gotten to that point yet. There will be zero Section 8 homes in this portion of the site, though, just because with the requirement that everyone has moved by this point, all the Section 8 housing will be accounted for. Phase Four could be anywhere from 75 to 150 homes on that, or apartments on that site. It's obviously the closest to the commercial core of the city. It's got commercial buildings kind of surrounding it at that side, so it probably has the ability to be the densest portion of the site, but again, that's an exercise for the future. But it does, in particular, along the ground floor edge, along Second Street and Garrett, there's a lot of opportunity for ground floor and retail and commercial spaces that ideally are for businesses that serve low-income families, not just for Friendship Court, but for the surrounding community as a whole. Oh, that went fast, sorry about that. So that's the site plan as a whole, and again, you can see the dotted lines here representing the phase lines. Yes, this is about replacing the housing in many ways, replacing the outdated buildings and the stigmatized site, and the need for additional affordable housing in the community. But this is as much about opportunities for economic improvement and economic well-being for the residents onsite. Those numbers you see on the right-hand side, 3% represents how Charlottesville rates nationwide for opportunities for upward economic mobility, meaning if you're poor in Charlottesville, it is really, really hard to break out of being poor. So we have to utilize the redevelopment of Friendship Court as a launching pad for as many families as is possible to break that cycle of poverty. As Claudette mentioned, residents have asked for a ladder of affordability. If they, if residents get the opportunity to increase their income or get a better job, the opportunity to live elsewhere in the community is very, very limited. There is not additional affordable housing elsewhere for them to move to. So they'd have to make a choice if they wanted to move into better housing. They would have to move out of the city altogether into outer regions and outer counties to be able to afford what they can afford, and disrupt their social networks and their family locations and potentially job issues. So having that idea of a ladder of affordability onsite is a critical component of this. $14,000, that's the average income in Friendship Court, and $89,000, I think it's actually 600, is the average income for families in Charlottesville as a whole. So the need for additional affordable housing to be able to break that cycle is critically This is a somewhat more detailed look at Phase One. In Phase One, you know, we have the multifamily apartment style up here, we have the townhomes down here, we have critical outdoor space with a connectivity of sidewalks and pedestrian connectivity along this edge, and a pretty intensely designed and thoughtful outdoor space up here in this area because we are restricted from building over Pollack's Branch along this edge, which is why you see no buildings over that area. So it's an opportunity to put open and green space, basketball courts, driveways, et cetera. Phase One is going to be introducing a whole series of benefits for everyone at the site, not just for the folks who are going to be moving into the new housing on the site. As the city council, you approved the $75,000 to kickstart a wealth building initiative by being able to hire an economic opportunity coordinator. That economic opportunity coordinator will be working to build an FSS program, providing financial counseling onsite. That's a critical component of this. The early childhood center, as I talked about here, it's not just about, in particular, having spots for children to go, but it's about high-quality spots for children to go to be able to make sure that those children are ready to enter kindergarten with their peers when they go to Clark Elementary. And the early childhood center is a job opportunity, it's an educational opportunity, and it also provides support for families who are trying to get jobs and need that childcare support. The new community center that will be on the second floor of this building will be serving school-aged children and adults, and we're right in the process right now of revisioning what the breadth of that programming needs to be to support the community as a whole. And then finally, you know, Piedmont Housing Alliance's headquarters needs to come downtown again. For a long time, as I understand it, before I was here, it was downtown in different locations, and it's a critical place for people to walk in to get financial counseling, to get housing counseling, and by repute, when we moved to our current location, we lost 75% of our walk-in, just the walk-ins who come out on a daily basis. Having the ability to be downtown, again, is critical, and it also has us be accountable as we rebuild Friendship Court. We're right there in center. Future phases have lots of possibilities for additional commercial spaces. Health-related centers, small business incubation, workaround cooperatives, homeownership... centers, small business incubation, workaround cooperatives, homeownership opportunities, even all those things we will talk about, but we've been so focused on phase one, we haven't had time to get there yet. We will, but we haven't yet. So I'm going to do, this is a, I want to go, this is a kind of like a affordable housing financing primer one-on-one, just I think it's important to kind of just touch on this briefly, and I hope this isn't boring, I hope this is useful. I know it's late, so I'll try to do it quickly. This is not specifically about Friendship Court, it's about kind of the framework as a whole, which will then help support where I'm going with this. So every property, no matter whether you're affordable or market rate, you have operating costs that you have to pay. You have to pay staff salaries, repair maintenance costs, utilities, security, property taxes, all those things that any property has to pay. For an a hundred-unit apartment complex, you know, an estimate could be about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year. In addition, you have to have, this is, but this doesn't cover debt, this these operating costs. You also inevitably have some level of debt that you have on the property, whether it's affordable or not. In an unsubsidized context, that debt payment can be as much as a million, up to a million and three-quarters per year for, again, for estimating for about a hundred apartments. If you look at the rental, and this is the the flip side, so these are the, these are the costs, and these are the potential incomes, and this is the on the on the affordable housing side. So if you assume a hundred two-bedroom, average two-bedroom apartments, and we're including vacancy and bad debt and everything else, about a ten percent overall, if you have a hundred apartments, if you averaged sixty percent AMI rents, you'd have an in rental income of about one-point-two-five million dollars a year, again, round numbers. You can see in that case that one-point-two-five million covers your estimated operating costs and some debt, but nowhere near this debt that would be required for an unsubsidized property. And you can see as you go down in terms of average rents, the amount of rental operating income can drops considerably, and you'll see that there's a there's a threshold somewhere around here where you actually start not even be able to support just your basic operating costs, let alone any debt service. So the balance, as we look to real affordable housing, is what, how do you figure out the subsidized portion on the debt side to make the make the numbers work and the and the balance work? Additionally, if you're down below, you know, say forty percent AMI rents, you are starting to look at the possibility of needing an operational subsidy, which is the nature of public housing and the operational subsidy that that HUD provides, or in the case of the section eight units at Friendship Court, the operational subsidy that we get from the federal government. So in a typical, are there any questions about that, actually, before I move on? Does that all make general sense? So historically, when you look at tax credits, and this was discussed a lot in the last session as well, and when you look at task credit, tax credits, before, two years ago, you know, you could generally assume if you got nine percent tax credits, that the tax credits would cover sixty to sixty-five percent of of development costs. You would then assume something like ten percent of the of additional development costs would come from local public grants, i.e. city, county, whatever locality you're in, and then private foundations and grants maybe get to another five percent, which would let you have about twenty or twenty-five percent remaining on the debt side, which, if you average fifty percent AMI rents, is about the right, about the balance. These local public grants, this, this, if you don't have these portions, you can't get the Lytec component, because they require you to have local participation. So that was two years ago, that this is where we are now, which is that low-income housing tax credits realistically are really only closer to forty-five to fifty percent of development costs, and that is largely due to the twenty-seventeen corporate tax bill that was passed. Essentially, the the tax credits require financial institutions, typically banks, to invest in tax credits. Well, when they have less tax burden, their appetite for tax credits reduce drops, and the value of those tax credits drops accordingly. So in that two-year period of time, or since the tax bill was passed, we've lost about twenty percent of that value effectively. So this comes back to then, what what is the role of the local jurisdiction as far as potentially making that up? Because ultimately, we still have to end up with somewhere between twenty to twenty-five percent debt. Now, this is Friendship, so the on the left-hand side, there are some compounding conditions here. As was mentioned in the last presentation, construction costs are continuing to just rise, 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 rise. In his, in the historical context, when you had construction costs going up, you also had low Lytec value going up, typically speaking, because they are both market-dependent. And then when you had an economic downturn and you saw construction costs start to drop, you also saw Lytec values start to drop. And so, but you had a general, consistent, semi-predictable gap between construction and the and what you could get out of Lytec credits. We are in, nationally, we are in unprecedented territory where the value of the tax credits have started, have dropped, and construction continues to rise. And so that gap that was maybe planned for two years ago is is no longer predictable. It's 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 much higher than it was then. And then, of course, we're in a market where finance, finance, interest rates are continuing to rise, and that also impacts the viability. So in particular, as it relates to Friendship Court, if you remember back to that site plan, we have a mixture of parking parking types. The townhomes will have surface parking, which is the least expensive form of parking. The multifamily buildings will have structured parking, which is the most expensive form of parking. But that was a balance, like every other decision process we went through in Friendship Court, where we're trying to understand the priority, the resident priorities. We were trying to minimize cost, try to get as much parking on the surface as possible, but if we had done that completely, there would be no open and green space left over. So it had to be a balance in terms of of where we ended up. So there is some structured parking, we reduced that as much as we possibly could, but it's still there. One of the things that has become very clear in the last couple of months is that the soils in phase one, it's no, it's no wonder that they didn't build on that and that portion of the site forty years ago. The soils in that portion of the site are as bad as they get. Essentially, that means that the foundations and structural supports that need to support the buildings in there are much, much more expensive than we had anticipated, honestly. That's just, but that fortunately won't land, go, won't go through phases two, three, and four. It's really phase one where it's the fill over Pollock's branches where that's most impactful. The other thing that's unique about phase one relative to the other phases is that phase one has most of the four bedrooms in the redevelopment, just happens the way that we've, we've sectioned it out. Most of the three and four bedrooms are heavily in that, in that phase one portion, which means that construction costs are generally higher there as well. And then the the last piece is that because of the way that we have to plan things out, we have to account for the effective land costs all in phase one as well. So a lot of gets packed onto phase one that won't be, they'll be less challenging as we get to phases two, three, and four. So what do we need from the city? And these are all estimated, and I endeavored as hard as I could to get hard, hard numbers for you, but we are, we are still in the schematic drawing phase for the buildings, so we have an estimate from the contractor, but that still needs lots of refinement. In the CIP request that we had submitted back in September, we had identified one-and-a-half million for phase one, two million for phase two, two-and-a-half million for phase three. The nature of that CIP request was primarily focused on infrastructure costs, roads, the parkland, open space, those sorts of things. In phase four, we anticipate very minimal infrastructure costs, because that will largely be building for the most part, probably. In addition, there is going to be a need, and I have CAF up here as the source, but I know, you know, where where that pool comes from, I don't know, that that's, I haven't have it broken out right now. But as I pointed out, phase one has the biggest delta because of those particulars down here that I talked about, the bad soils, the mostly three and four bedrooms, the land cost, et cetera. So my, these are estimates of where we, where I think we need to be, which is basically in phase one, if you add these up, is between five-point-two million and six-point-seven million for phase one in total, and you can see how it cascades out beyond that. And that's based on the number of affordable units. So now I'm going to turn it over to some of the residents and let them speak for a few minutes on their experience. Who would like to go first?
My name is Zafar Khan again, and thanks for the patience that you have all been waiting here to to hear us also. From my experiences that I've been a resident for the last three years and representing a huge amount of Afghan refugees or immigrants that who have migrated from Afghanistan in recent years, it's about like over thirty families, and for us, it's, it has been a very good opportunity, especially me as a resident, taking part in all these meetings. I think it's a, it's a community-led initiative. I don't say that it is PHA-led, or in a sense that it's us, we, we are, you know, taking initiatives, what what we want in that, and, and, and we all think, the residents that I'm representing, they all, we all think that once it is built, I think it will give us a more peaceful environment, and especially for our community that we have experienced war and, you know, bloodshed, so we, we think that we need a peace of mind, and, and this development would provide that, obviously, for us. And also the opportunity, especially myself, I'm an undergraduate student at UVA, and there are many other residents that they are also going to PVCC, and they are hoping to do their undergrads or masters from UVA. So that's a great opportunity, and we hope that you all have a, you know, your support towards this project.
Hi, I'm Crystal Johnson and resident of Friendship Court. I moved there in December of two thousand and five. I had actually come here to Charlottesville through the She Shelter and then transferred over to the Salvation Army for their transitional housing, and applied for places to live here in Charlottesville, and I landed an apartment in Friendship Court. When I originally moved here, it was to escape domestic violence, and my number-one priority was my children. I didn't know anything about Vinegar Hill or Friendship Court or the rich history that's represented here in Charlottesville, and over time, the community has grown on me, and my children have grown up in the Charlottesville City School Systems here. I have struggled over the years with trying to figure out how to address some of these housing issues, and I had been saying many years ago, before this opportunity was presented to my family to be part of this, that I I wanted to find a way to to help the neighborhood, but I didn't feel like I knew enough about the area. So I went on a quest myself to better my myself, my family, and to become more educated about the area and the rich history of African-Americans here, and how could I help growth, help change in a positive direction and see families thrive the way I was trying to thrive myself. I kept feeling that there were barriers and walls financially to my family succeeding. So when this opportunity was presented, I jumped on it and didn't know where it was going to go, but I just knew I wanted to be part of it in whatever way I could. Over the last two years or so, this process has presented itself with so many opportunities for job growth, improved quality of life. One of the things that had concerned me with my children being in the Charlottesville City School Systems, an issue that had come up, was I noticed that the teachers were being, they were living in different areas, they weren't living locally, and some of them were driving up to an hour to get here for work every morning to to be teachers at Clark Elementary, and I saw how it was affecting how they related to their students because they didn't know the local events that were going on that were impacting their students and how to help traumatize children, how to relate to them. And I was right in the thick of it with my children growing up in Friendship Court and witnessing and seeing various things happening. And I wanted the other children growing up in Friendship Court to know that they have an ally, they have people that that want to see things for their future, for their development, for their growth. And how are they going to get that with the structure that we currently have? There's just this financial wall that's there. I wanted them to know that they have college opportunities and job opportunities, and this is a great way to present that, for that growth to happen. And I saw parents needing support with childcare and single mothers struggling to find jobs because they had to put their children's childcare needs above that and and struggle with how to financially cover everything. As I'm a single parent to six children myself, I know that struggle all too well. I I've been a witness to various mental health issues in our neighborhood that have been largely gone unaddressed. And myself, I have been dealing with complex PTSD, and after I have gotten help for my issues with the domestic violence past that I've come from with my, with my children, I saw that some of the similar situations were happening in the neighborhood, and how could I represent that? How could I bring that to the table? How could I, you know, give them a better quality of life to maybe address some of these issues along the way? One of the issues is better housing, better job opportunities, better growth, so that children can see that there's other options out there. So I, what I wanted, and what others have wanted, we've all addressed, is seeing teachers given the ability to move closer. I've talked with teachers in the past, and they said, we just can't find adequate housing nearby that we can afford. They're struggling as well. So having this one-third, one-third, one-third income levels would kind of address that issue and really help bring everybody into this community environment and help out all
Good evening. Again, I'm Tamara Wright. My experience with this process has had its ups and downs. Initially, I was just thinking, you know, we give a little bit of input, you know, here and there, and it wouldn't be as much work. However, once we dove in, it was a tremendous amount of work, but the experience has been very enlightening. Without this opportunity, we would have been sitting down in an architect's office, you know, working with things to scale. One of the things that was very important to me was making sure that we had the townhome style units on the complex and making sure that we addressed the needs of all of the residents. And I think we did a pretty good job of that, you know, and we took into consideration our moms, you know, with more than one child, we took into consideration our seniors, we took into consideration our families who have children with disabilities. I myself have a child who falls into the autism spectrum. What is construction going to be like, you know, for him phased out for twelve to fourteen years? So, you know, we, we thought about all those things. One of the things that was really important for me was no displacement and finally getting to a good mix. I feel like the the third, third, third works out really well because just we had major concerns about having too much market-rate housing and what would that feel like? Having the opportunity to visit other complexes that have mixed income was very good. It gave us a better feeling about it because, you know, initially, we're nervous about that. We don't know what it's going to feel like, you know, with having the market-rate families and the low-income families. But I feel like it's something that definitely needs to be done. We don't want to be known as just a low-income housing community. We need to be a part of the rest of the city, and I feel like this gives us a great opportunity to do that. And I think it comes at a time where it really needs to be done. The city has just been negatively highlighted for over the past year, and I think this is a great starting point to kind of change all of those things and and give everybody a fresh start. And I think, you know, kind of leading this process... And I think, you know, kinda leading this process, you know, with Friendship Court going forward with it first will be a really good opportunity. Thank you.
Do you wanna, oops, I'll fall over again. Do you wanna do the letter now?
Okay. Dear Mayor Walker and City Council, thank you for your concern and for your interest in our plans for the redevelopment of Friendship Court. We started this process over two years ago and have dedicated long hours of frequent meetings, all to develop the plan we have today. We are committed to this project and have learned a lot and will continue to learn. Working through the right affordability mix has been an evolving process for us. When we started this work, we thought we would need more market rate apartments to make the project work financially. We do not feel comfortable with this approach and we're delighted to work through options to find the mix we felt more comfortable with. Elected by our committee as representatives for them, we as a resident team were able to formulate a plan that addressed our initial concerns. It is important to us that we live in a community that gives us the opportunity to grow and to stay in the community if we choose to do so. This plan, our plan, creates a ladder of affordability and allows us this choice. We believe wholeheartedly that we want to lead our future, not follow, and this is what we have done to develop the plan we have today.
Our plan mixes three layers of income. Each layer addresses a need and look to the, to the future of what is needed for current and future resident of Friendship Court. As well as other residents of the city of Charlottesville. Through, through work with our design team whom we selected, we worked to establish three layers planned that include approximately a third Section Eight, a third intermediate affordable housing, and, and a third market rate. So we do not want an exclusively low-income development, we want a mixed-income community. The Section Eight layer preserves the 150 units we currently call home and provide for same 150 units in the new redeveloped Friendship Court. So we are pleased that the contract, the contract for Section Eight was currently renewed, thereby preserving the long-term affordability of 150 unit. The second layer provides affordable housing for those who, those whose incomes are slightly higher than Section Eight layer that we, that we and other residents at Friendship Court might need ourselves in the future. But it also provides much-needed additional affordable housing in the city of Charlottesville. The final layer is intended for income families, for middle-income families and individuals. This approach begins to address the affordable housing crisis in the city of Charlottesville. So we see the work we are doing as being a part of solution and hope our plan and approach offers an example for future affordable housing plans in the city. We want to lead our future, not follow an old outdated model of segregated and low-income housing development.
We do not want our plan to negatively affect your decision to support any funding requests we make to the city of Charlottesville. We, as residents of the city of Charlottesville and Friendship Court, respectfully ask that you support our plan wholeheartedly. In part because we designed it and we designed it with our own future needs and those of the city in mind. Our dedication to this redevelopment is hard to summarize, but we remain a dedicated team who works together to find the best possible solution for Friendship Court's future. Sincerely, the Friendship Court Advisory Committee.
Thank you. I'm gonna close it out with a quick video. Hopefully this works. I was having troubles with the sound earlier.
You can hear it. You're hearing something.
No, I don't think that's it.
Ms. Merle, can you just tell us what it said?
It's not coming through there. Yeah, barely coming out of my speakers. I apologize. I can't control it.
So let me address this.
Please, go ahead, Ms. Merle.
Hi, I'm Merle Hodges, a former resident of Friendship Court. Actually, my voice will elevate itself.
Oh, we have, we're recording on Facebook, so people can hear.
So I was a resident of, actually Garrett Square for twenty-seven years. After increasing my income, I had to move out of Garrett Square, not because I wanted to move out. I was forced to move out because of my income. I would have preferred to have stayed right in that community because it offered me what I needed when I needed it most, and it was housing for my children. It was an opportunity to, for me to grow and to love peoples and they loved me in return. It's very easy for me to stand, to look at these residents and all the work that they've done because I know their struggle. I know what they've, have been through, what they're going through. And this redevelopment would do so much, not for Friendship Court, but for the city of Charlottesville, because it's needed. We just need to be able to support one another for wherever we're at and to respect each other. And we do that simply by living with each other. It's okay for me to live next door to her and to support her. It's also okay for me to live next door to you and to support you and what you're doing. And it's also important for me to live right next door to you. That's what community is all about. And that's what I hope that this project brings to Charlottesville. That's what we need. I return back to that community at least once or twice, every month, every week, because it's a part of me. It's still in my heart because it was community. It was home. It was just not a house. It was just not an apartment. It was home. And that's what we wanna provide for all residents in the city, a place that they can call home. Thank you.
You'll try to play that again?
The preservation, I absolutely have it referenced.
Okay. And if I can start with the, the comments, we spoke last week and I talked about the fact that I have been a proponent of not going to market rate. If you look at even eighty percent of our current AMI, you're talking about seventy-one thousand dollars and we can talk about all the people locally who could still live in Friendship Court and earn around the eighty percent or lower mark. And I think sometimes that's, you know, taken as you don't want market rate people living among, and I'm saying this as a person who lived in Friendship Court from ninety-eight to two thousand and five with my family. My concerns with the market rate units, and I just want to address them publicly, is that we have consistently been building market rate units. If we have an opportunity and the land space to build affordable eighty, sixty percent and under, in an area where when we're talking about mixed income, mixed use, it's already mixed income, mixed use. There is, as everyone knows, there's three notches across one side of the street, AC/AC on the other side, condos at the Gleeson's. So to say that the only way that Friendship Court can survive or make it, or, you know, for this redevelopment to happen, is for that to become, in that land space, mixed income is something that I have continuously challenged in conversations and I'm challenging it the same way with CRHA. I think the social conditions that we have in Charlottesville, we haven't addressed them yet. And I am concerned about what happens when you put a market rate family next to a lower-income family and the power dynamics of that. And some of the habitat where this is happening, it hasn't necessarily worked out and we don't hear about it, it's not talked about, but if you're, you know, asking those questions. So that has been my concern. We are already in a very integrated community. There are, you know, the, like I said, the Gleeson's is right across the street, businesses right downtown. So to say that the only way this community goes from what is perceived to be segregated and stigmatized without addressing the larger issues of the community that has been created up until this point in the community that we are trying to undo and create a better community as a whole. So that has been the concerns that I have been expressing, the fact that, just the understanding that even at, you know, eighty percent, if there was a cap there, that's, you're still talking about someone earning seventy thousand dollars a year, which is a great, at, from the fourteen thousand, that's the current average of Friendship Court, current residents. And I'm concerned all across the city about what happens when you are now taking land away from lower-income individuals and incorporating market rate units into those when that is what has been primarily built in the city, you know, for the past, you know, forever, you know, but definitely the past few decades, they, it's been tracked. Anybody else awake?
I'm just trying to put the numbers relative to our prior conversation as we just kinda look at all of this holistically. Could you just give me a sense again, I'm sorry, I guess the timeline, just remind myself of how far out we are looking to kind of phase these funds.
I'm trying to get there as well.
Just to the, I can look at both these things at once.
Sorry, I don't have those there together.
So as to twenty twenty-five, it should be completed, right?
Twenty twenty-five for phase, phases one through three.
Yeah.
Which is the, yes, you can see it here. So essentially, phase one through twenty twenty-one, then twenty-three, then twenty-five, then twenty-seven.
So you're like six budget cycles.
Yes, and the, the CIP framework was considering twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, which is why only phases one through three were looked at in that CIP request.
Okay.
But I, I also pointed out that, sorry, I'm trying to get back to it, lots of slides. And a slow clicker. I don't anticipate a significant, as far as infrastructure-related costs, I don't anticipate a lot of money associated with that in phase four because all the infrastructure will essentially be, have been built out by that point.
So, one question for me, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Mur, oh, did I answer your question?
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm getting away.
Oh. So Mr. Murphy talked about, again, in his draft budget, what he's hoping to look at was, um, three million dollars. Correct me if I'm wrong, three million dollars for PHA? Correct?
The draft budget has just the top line CIP request in it. So the one and a half, two, and two and a half. So one and a half in twenty, nothing in twenty-one, two in twenty-two, nothing in twenty-three, two and a half in twenty-four.
Gotcha.
Nothing on the bottom line.
Any, any phase.
So if we were to hit your number in the CIP, where, if the, if the CAF can't give you the three point seven to five point two for phase one, what would you do?
We'd be in the same boat as Public Housing, which is trying to do philanthropic raising to fill that gap.
Right.
The gap doesn't go away. I mean, we are doing everything we can to, to figure out how to reduce costs from the initial estimate that we got because it's higher than we had hoped for, but we're in the same boat.
Based on the, yeah, we're back to square one, but based on the numbers, the, the funding that we currently have and the, the CAF is just so funny to say, 'cause Vice Mary Hill and I were talking today and she was calling it CAF and I had no idea what CAF was. We just normally say it all out, but in any event, the CAF, if the CAF, the, the funding that we currently have in the CAF can fund this, Mr. Murphy? Or will we have to make a decision of sorts?
Well.
Because there's three point two in it now.
Yeah.
You're asking for three point seven, that would engulf the whole thing.
Well, as, as stated earlier, part of the strategy in the current draft budget from the manager's office is the idea that the current allocation to the Affordable Housing Fund could be prioritized for the redevelopment of public housing and/or Friendship Court. And so instead of that remaining level at three point four million dollars each of the next five years, I would propose that it be reduced to one point nine million, nine hundred thousand per year for the subsidy, and one million dollars a year for other affordable housing projects. And that that one and a half million dollars a year that was in your draft CIP from the last year, the year that we're in right now, would be redeployed to fund CRHA and Friendship Court in addition to new dollars that we would bring to bear. And again, you know, what is the task? We've got two hundred million dollars worth of plus.
Right.
CIP requests out there, and that is with zero dollars that are not maintenance or redevelop, I mean, it's not the reconfiguration of schools, it's zero dollars towards that.
Right.
Okay, so not even tackling that. And we need to stay within the debt limits.
Right.
In order to maintain our bond rating. And to date, I have no instruction that new revenues are in play, so without any new revenues. So that, we're pretty close to tapped out with the numbers that are in there today.
And for that reason.
And you need to look at, what are the projects that we put in there, you know, but I'm also presuming that based on the information we have, that you're gonna follow through on things like courts and parking garages and Belmont Bridge and West Main Street, et cetera. That, of course, will be part of the process you'll go through as you debate the budget in the coming months.
See, I think for that reason, I mean, it's not necessarily a popular, well, I think in some, in some segments of the community it's popular and others it's not as popular, but we have to look at tax revenue. So even if that's the lodging tax, in which is not necessarily people who live in here, I mean, one cent on the lodging tax gets us seven hundred thousand dollars in revenue? Correct? Yes? Roughly. I mean, and if we were to, to write a policy.
Lodging is more, Dr. Bell, and we'll look it up while we're talking, but that's, that's the rough one cent equivalent on real estate, not lodging.
Oh, forgive me. So lodging is even more, lodging is eight fifty, help me, well, in any, in any event, if we were to look at having a dedicated revenue stream such as the, the lodging tax one cent increase and we say that that funding stream will go specifically to affordable housing, that allows us to be able to bear some of these costs on these projects and still be able to take care of our own. I think it needs to be something that we think about because right now, we're, we're gonna be tapped and we have to be able to take care of these segments of our community.
And I do wanna point out, as it relates to both public housing and in terms of Friendship Court, the commitment for phase one for each organization, the work that the commitment for phase one for each organization, the work that, for Crescent Halls and South First Street, et cetera, and for phase one here, requires that commitment to be in place by the time we apply for tax credits in March twenty nineteen.
March, yeah.
Just want to be clear on that timeline.
So that's even before the end of the cycle.
Doesn't mean, the money doesn't need to be allocated, but the commitment needs to be, the commitment needs to be in place.
Did we get the number on how much the lodging tax? So that's, yeah, the second number, I thought, so see that. So if it's eight fifty, and if it was a dedicated, we bypassed the formula that we currently have in which forty percent of all additional revenue goes to the school and we were to write a policy or pass a resolution that strictly said, this funding goes specifically to either the Affordable Housing Fund or is allocated or distributed evenly between PHA and CRHA. I think that helps, but there's different ways in which we can do it. But we have to look at other funding streams.
I mean, equally, I don't think would, I mean, we, I don't know why we can't, like, we, we know that there's a need. We know that the need is great.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we need to be going into like solutions about how to, how to do it. You know, even the conversations around like whether, you know, CRHA can fund, you know, their own or should be able to, we know they can't. So that's a conversation that we shouldn't be having because we know they can't do it.
Right.
At this point.
I'd like to say something about that. First off, thank you so much for your presentation. It was compelling. It was extremely detailed so that we had, we really did appreciate, I appreciated the one-on-one course on financing. And the residents, I think, I saw the hard work you did for the two years. I saw how much time you put in, in the architect's office, going, going to check out all the other opportunities in DC and Arlington and Alexandria, to understand what these places meant and what it meant for the people who lived there. And you were truly dedicated to representing your community. And I want to applaud you for that. It really, from the bottom of my heart, it is, your wisdom is beyond words. Your commitment and love for your community is beyond measure. And that goes for you too, Ms. Houchens. So I, I would, no more than I would with the Housing Authority, Public Housing Association of Residents, nor with you, I, this is your plan. And I, I, I am committed to try and make it work and try to fund it. And I'm hearing my colleagues, Councilor Bellamy and Mayor Walker. I, I think we do need to commit for phase one at this point, for both, and we need to, at the long-term strategy, but I do think we need to commit to fund these, these projects. And Crescent Halls needs to be done, it needs to be done. And but we, then we need to get creative and figure out how to fund it. It's not a question of trying to figure that out now.
Right.
But we do need to make a commitment to getting these projects up and off the ground. It, this is, this is it. This is the time.
So would that be, to hearing you, Ms. Calvin, would that be saying essentially, we're directing staff to bring us back a litany of options?
Yes.
In regards to being able to fund it, no options essentially off the table? Just bring us back, I mean, as we continue these discussions, bring back a variety of different scenarios so that we can figure out how to fund this, not only this project, but thinking long-term, as both you and Mayor Walker have alluded to.
And I, I would like to see us at least have options through the first phase of the First Street property for CRHA and the PHA. So Crescent Halls, First Street, their first phase and PHA phase. If we can get, what does that, what do we need to do to make that happen?
It's all on you, Mike.
It's good to hear.
So, I just want to make sure that I'm very clear on the council's request. So, in my estimation, the, the plan that we have right now, developed by the budget team in the manager's office, would facilitate all but point nine million dollars of the public housing redevelopment of Avon Levy, South First, South First Street, Ballfield, and Crescent Halls. And that's with all of the burden on the city and no private philanthropy.
And what assumption is that for the tax credits?
That's four.
Four percent?
Yeah, I mean, we'd be exceeding the tax credits at nine percent.
Correct.
And we'd be within striking distance of the entirety of the second phase, the additional two hundred units at South First Street, if they were successful in getting nine percent.
Right.
So, that would, that would be a major shift in how much you could do. And again, that's just the city piece without knowing the, what the entirety of the philanthropy ask would be. With regard to Friendship Court, right now, we have six million dollars programmed in that draft through the first three phases.
Right.
Is council's request that we rethink that and fund part of that bottom line? Can you flip back for me, Sanjan? That bottom line for phase one only? Rather than spread out the investment that we have programmed in to two and three?
Well.
But I want to say, why can't we do both?
Well, what he's saying is spread out over time. Are we asking to, that, right now, we're going to focus on phase one? But I think we also need a plan for these other two phases. And that's the same as with, you know, with CRHA. So looking at, and I, I do want us to remember the equity conversations we are having with the school system and whatever their ask is going to be, like, we're going to need to, if we are really talking about, you know, fixing a lot of the issues or at least, you know, attempting to, we're going to have to weigh all of this. You know, so, again, from a solution standpoint, like, just how, I mean, if this is what they need to begin and they have to have that commitment, then I think that we have to, we have to focus. But I think we also need to see how we can support CRHA and how we can do all of it and not pieces of either one of them.
And, and this is a, what can be done in the five-year plan? Certainly, we can be working together as a community about what is the long-term vision, about how you continue to fund redevelopment of the Housing Authority and Friendship Court. But as I understand it, you know, what can reasonably be done in the Housing Authority plan is perhaps those three, maybe four projects, right? The first three phases of this project at Friendship Court would be underway. And just, I want to be clear about the instruction because we have six million dollars programmed right now. And I assume that this number, that is the high end, is if they end up with four percent tax credits, you're talking about trying to program nineteen point two million dollars instead if we're talking about all three phases. And that, that's not about, you know, looking at a difference in prioritizing or shifting more money out of the Affordable Housing Fund.
Floating bonds and raising taxes.
Or even just new revenues, right?
Where, where?
I, I want to be sure that we're talking about it.
Yes.
Where, where? I think it's necessary.
So you want to know, on the revenue side, what would be required to fund this in its entirety?
Yes.
Yes.
In its entirety, and knowing that there's a time deadline of February to get a commitment for their phase one applications for both CRHA and PHA, which is going to be a smaller number, because it's for that first phase. So we do need to think near-term and long-term.
And then, this is when I think that we have to, as council, do a better job and look thinking long-term when the funding requests are coming towards us for a variety of, you know, community needs. But what are we going to prioritize? Because again, you cannot do everything. And we have to, we have to do a better job at making sure that we are clear on what we are attempting to do in this time. And I don't think that we're doing a very good job of that, which is probably, you know, what gives staff some of their major concerns about, you know, how, how to do it all, because we're, we really throw a lot at them.
I think it's been clear, though. We, we've heard from the community in regards to a major, the number one priority, in my personal opinion, from what we've heard from throughout the community, no matter what section or fragment that, in which you're in, is affordable housing.
Mm-hmm.
So that has to be what we communicate to staff. And I think this sets a very clear priority for us, that affordable housing is what we are prioritizing. So, let's do it.
And I just want to add too, though, that it is going to take some creative investment and financing that, and unlike, say, transportation investments where we have, the Virginia Department of Transportation gives us revenue sharing as well as smart scale funds, they can match with us so that we extend our dollars twofold. We don't have that in housing. And that's, it is, it's, we can't stretch our dollars locally like we can with transportation investments. We, we are feeling the big brunt of it locally because again, the feds have abdicated their responsibility in this area for quite some time. And now it's learning about how the tax, tax cut has exacerbated the problem. So we really, and it's going to require more in-depth partnerships with VHDA and all, all state institutions that we can get our, our hands on. So I think that, this is the beginning of a different kind of conversation.
The shift is occurring?
I think we need to understand what all options we have for the revenue piece, you know, because there's obviously bond options, there's also tax options, and what impact that has on the communities that we don't want to be taxing out any further from the city and how do we have to get creative there? So I, I'm just curious to understand what our options are because we did look at a multitude of, of levels of bond issuance and where that got us in terms of our bond ratings. And I think it's important that we take a hard look at where we were at with that and, and obviously, it's one of the options, but.
I agree.
I mean, even in regards to the bond, we got a triple A bond rating, let's use it.
But I think we definitely need more education and I would like that from staff on, you know, bonding and what are our options within the bonding spectrum. I think every time it comes up, you know, it's, do we, should we do it? Instead of like figuring out what is, what can we do within it and what is the best practices there? So I would like that information so that we can know what we are considering and not at the, you know, at the last, you know, minute when it's crunch time and especially now since this even puts us, you know, on a different deadline than we were already thinking in terms of, you know, finishing our normal budget cycle.
So, this is a, a challenge, no doubt. But that is the entirety of the focus for next Thursday night's work session on December the sixth.
On December sixth, not this Thursday.
And that is.
No, this Thursday got canceled.
This Thursday, the twenty-ninth, for the strategic plan was canceled. December sixth is about the CIP. And to have another deep dive with council about the projects that we're looking at, including in the draft budget, because really, the timeline is accelerating towards that planning commission meeting on December eighteenth. And there's certainly a great opportunity for council to continue to interact with the CIP and the regular operating budget all the way until approval the first week in April. However, those, that first draft has to get out there at some point and be public. And so, part of that discussion, in, in great earnest, right, needs to happen next Thursday night.
Well, and I just want to also say, though, that it also shows to me the importance of making sure that we have pretty robust revenue generation going on. Because when I was talking to Mr. Cullen a few months ago, for about every hundred thousand dollars of, of revenue that you need to cover debt service on a bond, you can about sustain about one point four million dollars worth of bonds. So, we, we also cannot only build on taxable projects. We have to keep building things that generate revenue for us so we have the revenue to pay for the debt service to cover the bonds. I just want to get that out there because sometimes that's lost, that when we do approve a commercial project, it actually does ultimately wind up helping our affordable housing challenges because it helps us pay for the debt service. And you cannot, we cannot ignore that. And I hope in our conversations, we're going to be getting updates, a draft comprehensive plan from the Planning Commission in December. That's also going to show us where our, our growth areas are going to be to generate revenue so we can balance these things out. We cannot just tax, we have to generate revenue and we have to float bonds and we have to do TIF districts and even the whole nine yards. It's going to be a really different level of sophistication with all this stuff that we've never done before. But I, I just wanted to make sure that we all thought about that, that it's, it's a whole range of things and strategies to cover our costs to be able to make sure that this happens.
Okay.
Do you have public comment?
Yeah, any comments from the public?
Okay.
All right, meeting adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.